All right, well, good morning. Uh, this is a work session, so no big votes on on anything but a lot of good discussion. Who are we gonna get started with, Mr. Hemsy?
I think you start with the pledge.
Pledge, sir. Okay, because I don't have a real agenda. Okay. Please stand and let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, Mr. Chair, you have the third quarter finance update first, and then the government center.
All right, third quarter finance update. Mr. Frishman.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Board members. David Frishman, uh, part-time finance director and full-time ditch administrator.
Proud.
Last couple of weeks, yeah.
Proud.
Um, so a couple of things, if I can get there we go.
Am I doing this, Tanner?
Yep.
Oh, got it. Maybe before we get going, let's let the audience know that Commissioner Lisa Anderson is, uh, I forget where she is. She might be with one of her patriotic sons.
I am. I am.
And she's very, uh, short on words, uh, this morning.
All good. Um, yeah, I, I'm in, I'm in Texas with one of my patriotic sons, so I got to pledge to the flag because he's got that in his living room.
All right.
Okay.
Great to see you. All right.
Okay, uh, so a couple of things. Uh, I'll do a quick update on our third quarter, uh, budget to actual, uh, how we're doing. And then we have two changes to the administrative's recommended 2026 budget. I'll summarize. Uh, then Ryan's gonna give an overview of the, from the GIS. Um, and if you remember in June, he showed you guys values, and now we're gonna show you those values again, uh, but also the corresponding taxes that those, uh, the properties are paying. Uh, so a high-level overview of that. Um, then I'm gonna go through the long-term financial plan. Um, and, uh, then we got, Lyndon's gonna do a, uh, road and bridge capital improvement update, and then Amarty was gonna do one, but we're post-pulling that one to January, February, decided it was, it's enough of, uh, enough stuff to just talk, uh, talk, have its own workshop. Um, and then Nick's gonna do a, um, um, update on, Ellen, Cindy, and Isaac are getting an update on our master space plan study.
What about, what about ditches? An update on ditches?
That's, uh, uh, no, I'm good.
Quick question, are there slides for this?
Yeah. Yes, there's a presentation.
Uh, we, we want Krista to re-mail them to you?
Um, well, I just thought that, that I would be able to see them on Zoom, but I can pull them up on email. That's fine.
Okay. Huh. Yeah, we'd have to share a screen with you. Maybe that's possible.
Uh-oh. Well, now we can't hear you.
I was seeing them earlier, but, um, so I guess I was under the impression I would be able to see them on screen. All good.
We'll try and share them if not, uh, if you have a.
No, no, I can pull them up.
Okay, so, um, high-level investment income, uh, continues to, uh, positive, positive budget to actual variance. Um, that's holding steady. We'll see what the Federal Reserve does with interest rates, but so far so good with that. Uh, Health and Human Services, uh, they did have reimbursement delays, uh, due to the federal shutdown. There's, uh, Mary Kay just texted me this morning, they're starting to come back in again. Uh, but overall, we think we'll be fine. I think they'll get caught up. Um, their placement budget, which is, uh, usually that's the one we worry the most about, because those are the ones, as you're aware, that can get costly, um, and they're outside of our control. Uh, we just have to pay the bill. Um, but that one so far, uh, through the third quarter is, is, is doing well also. Um, our tax collections, obviously a, a big, um, a big number for us. We got, we're at ninety-seven percent, which is a little bit ahead of last year, so, um, we're doing great with that. You know, we should be up right, right at ninety-nine point, uh, something by the end of the year. A few more trickle in here, uh, before the year end. Uh, Public Works, uh, this is new for us, um, that we're projecting a negative cash balance in our Public Works, um, road and bridge projects, um, at year-end, and that, we haven't, we haven't experienced that before. Um, but it's just, it's the, uh, it's the timing related to the number of huge projects that they're doing. Obviously, we're putting the money out front for most of these, um, and then we get reimbursements. Um, and, uh, we do anticipate, once we collect all those, we'll be back to where we want to be, but we are gonna be showing, um, at year-end, a negative cash balance in the, in that account.
How does that get covered?
What's that?
How does that get covered if we're negative?
Uh, it's just a, a, we got, uh, positive cash balances in, in other areas, and it just, it means we have less money to invest, uh, overall.
So Dave, the receivables are who? Mindot?
Um, Mindot, yeah.
Mindot, Federal, Pay.
Just about everybody we do business with.
Skaflaws all. Okay.
We just got so many claimings.
It's more, yeah, it's more on our end, just to process the, all the invoices and get it.
Getting better.
MMB, probably.
There's gonna be more, not worth it. More, more expenses. We're trying to improve our planning process, we pay every month, call them all out parks, they're getting close, so, um, so when you pay a bill, you get a revenue the same month, the next month, that's all right.
There, there's certain set, some of their contracts differently, so they're able to bill them. We, some of our contracts, we weren't billing them to the very end of the project, and, you know, it was fine. When it wasn't a lot of money, that was good, but you add up a bunch of those, um, that impacts cash flow.
Can we late fee the state?
You, you can try, yeah. I wouldn't hold out much hope, but, um. So just something, you know, something we're managing, something we're keeping an eye on. It does impact our, uh, our investment portfolio. That's, uh, Mary Kay and, uh, Mr. Curber, Tom Curber's still involved with that, so, uh, they're actively managing that, but it did catch their eye, that, oh, whoa, look at this. And then, um, then we started talking with Lyndon and, and his team, and, and we are projecting, uh, negative, uh, which the auditors might, might make a comment about, but, um, kinda like a ditch, negative balance in a ditch account. Those are, these are things that happen when you're doing a lot of projects. Uh, recording fees, uh, they're ahead of, uh, uh, the third quarter 2025, or ahead of where we were last year, but still below, uh, like our, our running, uh, five-year historical average, um, mainly based on interest rates, um, refinancing activity. That's when, uh, if those drop down a little bit more, we'll start seeing more refinancing, then, um, that'll pick up. But, uh, as Mary Kay indicated, this is actually her presentation, uh, she was gonna give this, but then she had some, uh, change in plans, and, uh, so, uh, I'm doing that, but she did mention it's a lagging indicator, right? We're, we're kinda following the economy when it comes to, uh, recording fees with land records. And then lastly, our license center, um, a positive news, uh, losing less money than budgeted. Still losing money, but it's less than what, uh, we had, we had planned on. Um, we're, uh, making some improvements in our operations, and, um, we're, um, got new staff that, that are doing great, and we're, uh, we made some improvements on our website in terms of our, um, making appointments and, and, uh, uh, different things, so a lot of, a lot of good things happening there. So any questions on our third quarter finance update? So overall, good, steady, no, no, no big worries. Um, things are going well.
Is the net delta a couple hundred thousand one way or the other? Is it a million to budget, to budget?
For license centers?
No, for all Q3.
All Q3? Um, uh, too hard to tell. That, those, uh, uh, mainly those, those placement budgets and, you know, some of those lagging things, we, we don't, we, we, we always think it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna break even, you know? And unless we see something significant that says, oh, wow, this is gonna, this is really gonna help us, and that's gonna carry the day, or we got a really big problem. If we had a really big problem, then I'd be coming to you guys saying, you know, we got, we got, what do we, what do you guys want to do before year-end to adjust for this? But at this point, it's just, it just seems steady, and the things that are uncontrollable that are out there, if we have a little bit of good news in one area, it's being offset by another area, so.
So we're coming out of Q3 flat?
Yeah, flat is our, uh, is our projection. But just, that, that, that's not really meaningful, Commissioner Ruderman, because we always say that. We always say we're flat, until we know we're not, and, you know, so it's, 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 it's tough to track everybody's business and, and really, um, know where we are in real time, but we are, we're looking, we're managing best we can. We do ask a lot of questions, and, but everything at this point just seems like they're all offsetting, and so, yeah, we're expecting a flat.
Great news about the license centers.
Yeah, it's good, uh, hard work, and, uh, yeah, uh, great, great people doing, doing great work. Um, we'll keep, we'll keep at it.
But on that, Mr. Chair, what, what kind of gap do we have now, do you think? Was it half a million we had annually?
That was, uh, that was during the COVID years when we weren't bringing revenue. Yeah, we're closer to two hundred thousand negative this year.
On operations?
On operations, yeah. Okay, we're lost. Tanner, am I locked up?
I think Colin took over, I don't know if that.
All right. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Um, oh, this, uh, sorry, I'm having this slide. So, uh, two changes to the administrative's recommendation. Uh, as you recall, we had a voluntary four-day work week and voluntary furlough. Uh, we had put fifty thousand as just a placeholder, uh, a nice round number for the 2026 budget. Uh, then we went through the open enrollment process, and we ended up with ninety thousand in savings, so an additional forty thousand. The administrative's recommendation is to, um, take that forty thousand dollars in, in levy savings on voluntary payroll, um, reductions, and add to the employee relations STOC, which is our short-term, um, short-term positions. Um, and that's a, that's a bucket then that all the divisions can use, um, i- if they have unexpected, um, and temporary, uh, needs related to, uh, people taking time off, or medical leave, or, um, maternity leave. And we're anticipating we need that. They had actually asked for more initially, but we weren't able to fit in the budget, and now we're able to do that because of the, uh, Minnesota Paid Family Leave Law that's going into effect. In, in effect, uh, beginning of the year, we think we're gonna need, we're gonna have more of that, um, people taking time off and, and needing to backfill that, uh, and this, this bucket of money that, um, uh, Imperial Relations has, will, will allow us to spend a little bit more, um, doing that.
Do we know how many participants that ninety thousand savings represents?
I just happen to have that in front of me, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Uh, so furlough, we have seventeen. Four-day work week, we have two. More were submitted, uh, and there's a little bit of indication here of staffing pressure, especially with the four-day work week. Uh, there were eight submitted and only two approved, so it kinda shows you that managers are a bit nervous about losing folks one day a week. But in, in some cases, and why, why we offered it, it works pretty well, and they make it work, they figure it out, but, but I felt it was a a good alternative to throw a little bit more money into the STOC, not that we'll just spend it. We might end up saving that between, between this, these programs and then paid family leave and some of the other things that are putting additional pressures on staffing. So that, that's the thinking behind it, anyway.
As I mentioned, uh, so this change, along with this second one, they'll both be included in the administrative's recommendation that we'll be bringing, um, to the board on, on December second. Uh, the second, uh, change is in our capital projects, um, from both, uh, parks and trails and, and road resurfacing, um, area. That, we had an initial preliminary budget, we didn't have any money, uh, from the TAA, the, the, uh, Transportation Act, do you recall? Is that right? Yeah. Um, and we had a little more time, took a little more time, and then, and, um, decided there was more projects that the, that they're ready to do. And so you can see, we increased the capital projects, um, by those amounts, using mainly from the TAA funding, a little bit of grant funding and, and city cost shares that were associated with those projects. So we just increased our, our capital projects budget for 2026. Um, no impact on the levy, because we're using, uh, dollars from other sources. All right, with that, uh, um, let Brian come up and do a, uh, presentation. Overall message, uh, is assessor's sales study drives change in property values. That's what, uh, his presentation focused on in June. Then the property values, they change based on those, um, how those averages, how the, the, uh, change in values drives the property tax increase. So in general, the, the sales study, right, the actual sales increases people's property values, and if it happens faster than, than the, than the average, then there's gonna be a tax burden shift, um, to your property. So your, your tax rate is gonna be hot, your tax impact's gonna be higher than the average value at home. It's similar to the average, um, then it's gonna be similar, the tax impact will be similar to the average value at home, and then obviously if it's less. So it's a common misconception that people think, oh, my, my values went up by ten, fifteen percent. That means I'm, I'm, I am paying more, and they think it's going to the county, but what's really happening is they're paying more, and then those, uh, homes or properties that increase less than the average, they're actually paying a little bit less. So it's just, uh, it's between those guys that the money's being shifted. It's not actually coming to the county. So just, uh, that's the overall message of, of what this, uh, what Ryan, Ryan's gonna go through. It is a little tricky.
I guess you'll explain the technology stuff. Yeah, sure. All right, thank you.
Uh, good morning. I'm Ryan Johnson, county assessor. You chair commissioners?
Tanner?
Yeah.
See if that'll let me work there, Tanner? Yeah, probably not. Should turn this guy off, then? There we go. Okay, so overall, this kinda shows kind of an aggregate overall picture of, on the left, if you can kinda take a look at our taxable market value percent change. On the right, we've got those corresponding tax, uh, taxing impacts for more of a global county-wide perspective. I don't know if you guys recall, but every year we take a look at these same, um, five residential parcels, and kinda track their value and corresponding tax history. So all the current commissioners would probably recognize these parcels if you pull them up, with the exception of Commissioner Anderson. I don't think she's seen these, uh, exact parcel before. We'll start with the parcel here.
That is correct, Ryan. Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll start with this, uh, residential parcel here in Shanahan. You can see that its market value changed by just, uh, just under three percent. That taxable market value increased by a little bit more, because as that property's estimated market value increases, it loses what's called that homestead market value exclusion. So that's kinda why you can see that difference here with that three percent versus, uh, two point eight two. The corresponding total tax changed by three point four two percent. And I guess we should start with, you know, if you guys remember in June, overall residential property values increased by about four percent county-wide. So this parcel here, with the market value increase of just under three percent, is a little bit lower than what you're gonna see for the county-wide average.
And Ryan, what's the new number for the homestead exclusion?
Good question. So, uh, Commissioner Fahy, that homestead market value exclusion phases out once the property's estimated market value reaches five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred in value. So even, even at five hundred thousand dollars, you're not seeing a very, you know, large benefit. Uh, but the largest benefit is gonna occur at a value of ninety-five thousand, so, um, it's definitely geared for lower-value properties.
Where's this ninety-five thousand dollar property? I have a pen and paper.
You know, if you kinda think, uh, statewide, right, out of the eighty-seven counties, it's probably not gonna be located in Carver County, but some of your outstate counties are gonna have a lot more parcels that would fit into that price strata.
Commissioner District Two, no.
Okay, so we'll take a look at this parcel in Chaska. You can see its market value increased again, just a little bit under three percent. Its taxable is up just a titch more because of that decreasing market value exclusion with the homestead. And overall, its total tax has increased about four percent. And you can kinda see that most of the properties in that neighborhood are more or less moving in that same direction. So we get a little bit further out west, in Norwood Young, America. You can see this property increased by about six percent. And its corresponding taxable market value increased by about seven point three. And this property saw a total tax increase of about ten percent. So a lot of that would be attributed to it actually moving a little bit more than what that county-wide average is gonna see. I guess I'd also note that the average residential property is about four hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for this twenty-five assessment, pay twenty-six, and that average-value property saw an increase of about five point seven percent. So with a, with a larger increase, as Director Frishman alluded to, you're gonna see a, a larger contribution in this parcel's property taxes. We take a look here in Victoria. You see a lot of red, both with the county tax percent change and with taxable market value percent change. As a whole, Victoria itself obviously didn't see large increases on, on other, on either side, but this specific neighborhood, uh, was running a bit low with our sales study. So Victoria's overall change was about nine point one six percent. Uh, this particular neighborhood saw drastic increases. It was actually part of our five-year inspection this past, uh, summer, uh, in the summer of twenty-four. If you guys kinda remember, and, and like a three-year timeline, market changes and improvements that occur in calendar year twenty twenty-four are gonna influence that January second, twenty twenty-five value for taxes payable in twenty twenty-six. So if you kinda think of it in a three-year, you know, snapshot, then it kinda starts to make a little more sense. But as you can see with this neighborhood altogether, with, you know, seeing a nineteen percent increase, this property was about nineteen point three. Taxable market value saw a significant impact, you know, again, as we kind of approached that five seventeen-two. It's nearly phasing out that homestead market value exclusion, and that corresponding tax burden shifted to almost a twenty percent change in this case. As we move into Waconia, this property on Oak Point Drive, saw a market value change of about five point seven percent. You see that taxable market value change is gonna mirror that estimated market value change, because at this value, seven hundred and four thousand, it's not seeing any homestead market value exclusion at all. Total taxes only changed by just under three percent in this case. Does anybody have any questions about these five residential properties or anything in these neighborhoods?
It seems just an observation. It just seems like those five, we didn't pick out of a hat. They've been there for years, a decade or more, maybe.
Right.
Um, so it's a sample, and I don't know if it's a representative sample, but generally speaking, in all of those scenarios, the property value went up, um, less than the tax value, so essentially the tax rate went up. And so there's three big components of that, obviously. If anybody's watching, it's the school district, the city or township, and, um, uh, the county. And so, um, it just continued to impress upon us, if we continue down the path of the taxes that we're doing, um, we will increase our tax, uh, rate, and I think, uh, most, if not everybody on this board is, um, kinda committed to lowering taxes and getting our tax rate down. And then I had some, some activity on social media and some conversations around town in the last handful of weeks. A lot of people are asking about this, and, uh, thirty-five bucks a month more here, twenty-five bucks a more there. It all adds up. And so, um, anyway, I just wanted to say that these five represent what I've been saying for a while, that our tax rate looks like. Unless we make a decision to, to change our course, um, we'll go up. So just wanna make that comment.
Okay. We'll take a look at the commercial impact with, uh, three commercial retail properties we have in the county. And again, we've been tracking these for a handful of number of years, at least, uh, at least a decade or so. We'll start in Shanahan. So this DBA is One Stop Station Two LLC. A lot of you might know it as that convenience store that has that Burger King attached to it, right off of Five Out There in Chan. Market value change was relatively. Market value change was relatively flat for this property. Overall, for the twenty-five assessment, commercial property types saw a relatively minor decrease of about two and a half percent. So that's trending as expected. Market value's gonna match. County taxes increased by about two point two percent. And that overall tax increase is just under two percent as well. Take a look over in Victoria. We've got a multi-tenant, uh, commercial building over here that has several different tenants that have lease agreements with the fee owner, Spread Enterprises LLC. Overall percent change for this property is a decrease of just under two percent. Again, matching that taxable market value, there's no relief for commercial property tax, commercial property owners from any kind of exclusion. County taxes increased by fourteen percent, but the total tax amount saw an actual decrease of four point three eight percent. We'll go out west to Watertown. Uh, the fee owner, Citizens Telecommunications Company. Uh, this is, uh, obviously looking, we're monitoring this property again, like all the other properties, for a number of years. This building operates in part as a storage, partly storage for servers for frontier communications, and is actually a retail bookstore occupying the other space. Uh, this property was inspected in calendar year twenty twenty-four, and some changes were made based off of condition, occupancy and use. So this saw a more than average increase of thirty-five and a half percent, give or take. County taxes increased quite a bit on this parcel, just under forty-one percent. Their total taxes have gone up about forty-four and a half percent in this case. Does anybody have any questions about commercial property types? Here we go, we'll move on. There's a couple of agricultural properties. We'll start with Camden Township. Uh, ag in general, for the twenty-five assessments, saw a five point seven nine percent increase. This is just under average with a four point one percent increase year to year. Taxable market value is gonna stay the same. County tax is up about seven and a half percent, and their overall change is about six and a half percent in this case. Out in Watertown Township, this parcel here is linking at about a four percent change year over year. Taxable market value only two point six percent in this case. County tax increase of four point three percent, but their total tax amount is almost flat, at just a point two zero percent increase. Does anybody have any questions about agricultural properties?
Ryan, on the ag side, have you seen a lot of change in the larger parcels?
You know, uh, the Department of Revenue actually breaks out both improved and unapproved land. It's over thirty-four and a half acres. We have seen in the twenty-four study for the twenty-five assessment, and now, you know, currently in the twenty-five study for the twenty-six assessment, certainly some increasing market values for those larger egg parcels. Ag, like commercial, industrial, multifamily apartments, all of those property types require what's called a full sale verification for each sale that we have to then submit to the Department of Revenue. Since a lot of ag properties are enrolled in some kind of a program, some of those can kind of taint the sales. So kind of, kind of, you know, it increases the need for more scrutiny with those property types to really get down to what was, what was the overall driver for that transaction. Uh, but yes, Commissioner Fahy, to answer your question, we have certainly seen, uh, seen increasing market values for, for the larger egg parcels, uh, which kind of mirrors our, you know, green acre values. Uh, if you guys remember, I talked a little bit about that in June. Uh, that green acre per acre rate for both till, you know, productive and non-productive, real vacant land. Those values per acre on a per acre basis are set by the state, and it's based on every county's sales data. Uh, they try to look for true egg sales that have, you know, no non-egg influence. Uh, so it can be kind of hard to scrutinize that and really get down to what is a true egg sale, especially in a, a growing county like Carver, where a lot of our egg sales are gonna be located, you know, usually closer to a city where there's gonna be some development pressure. Uh, but we have seen that corresponding green acre per acre rate steadily increasing over the past few years as well. So that answers yes, we've, we've seen that impact, Commissioner Fahy.
Thank you.
Yep. So that does conclude this GIS presentation. So unless anybody has any other questions.
Fun stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tanner's gonna make another switch.
Okay, now switching to long-term financial plan. That's kind of the end for twenty twenty-six. Now we're looking to twenty twenty-seven, uh, and through twenty thirty-one, and then beyond as needed. Um, and just a reminder that the long-term financial plan is, it's a non-binding assertion of future intent. So it's just a plan, just a planning tool. It's very helpful for us to look at our capital, to be looking out, um, and, you know, equipment replacement, to decide if we want to hang on to something a little bit longer. If we think the, we're gonna be able to replace it in, in, in next year, you know, then you maintain it one way. If you think you gotta hang on to it for another five years, um, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna look at it differently. So, um, it's, it's, overall, it's a very good, um, it helps us look at both the operating, budget long-term challenges, what I've listed there, which includes for this, this year now, the legislative impacts, uh, which obviously had impact on our twenty twenty-six budget, but also we're looking for twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. Our facilities, vehicles, equipment replacement, uh, as well as our capital improvement plans, our CIPs. And there, those are funded by a variety of mainly non-property tax levy dollars. So in terms of the operating, uh, budget challenges, uh, obviously the, the largest increase every year is for our existing FTEs, uh, you know, six million plus or minus. Wage and benefit increases last several years, that's been our trend. It's obviously a big number, um, that we add to our budget every year just to keep our, our wages, our current wages, current staff competitive with the market. And then new FT requests, um, ongoing challenge. Uh, we weren't, we weren't able to add very many, um, FTEs to the twenty twenty-six budget. And that's been a trend we've had for a while, um, and, but the, the need continues. The tax base is growing, or the service delivery that we're doing is getting more complex. But we are trying to offset that with technology investments, focus on continuous improvement, trying to get more efficient, cooperating with other, other, uh, levels of government. We do have a, a five-year FT request chart that we, we look at. For twenty twenty-seven, it was eighteen and a half FTEs, pretty similar to what we have for twenty twenty-six. Health and Human Services, Heather's area, ten in there. The other one that jumped out was, uh, twenty twenty-eight, Chaska Library, um, seven FTEs. The administrator asked me to mention the electronic access. That's gonna be, uh, uh, an offset to that, perhaps cost sharing with the, um, the local governments in terms of libraries. Those are, those are, you know, strategies we're taking to try and mitigate the impact. I do have a chart showing the FTEs per thousand population using that average FTEs over the, uh, next five years excluding the Chaska, cause that, that kind of balances. But that'll be the next, uh, next slide.
Dave, excuse me, a quick question. On the Chaska Library, is that set to be open in twenty twenty-eight, and has that been confirmed?
You know, that's a, that's a Nick question, Commissioner.
That, that has been confirmed. I mean, I, I don't know if Nick is there, this is Lisa, obviously. Um, I'm on the library liaison. Um, yes, that has been concern, um, confirmed. Although I'm working with the City of Chaska on those FTEs, and, and that's something, that, something that we're considering and looking at as we design that library and plan for the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'll give you more of an update next, next week.
Yeah, and we'll dive more into this issue, certainly as things progress. But, uh, as noted here, I think electronic access, not only for the Chaska Library, but for all, our whole system is a pretty big key to providing good services and trying to mitigate some of these cost escalations. Uh, but also this cost share, and I would say that sort of this new idea that we're just starting to talk about with, with our cities, and we haven't really explored it too much, so stay tuned. But the idea is to, just instead of saying, well, we can't afford it, or we're gonna cut it, could you help us? Maybe leverage your existing resources, maybe your park staff or somewhat, some other way, if you want some of these discretionary services intact, can you help? Right? Instead of just saying, cut, cut, cut. And, and there's a long ways to go with that, but I think it's a big component of our, as we look, you know, two, three years of that whole plan, which is cost, state cost shifts, and we'll get into those moving forward. Uh, and then finally, I would say, uh, I think it's important to keep more up to speed on what's going on with this new library. So I've talked to county or city administrator, Poteraski, and Nick, and I, and Jody and others. But let's get this in the county boardroom on a periodic basis to say, hey, here's what this library is starting to look like, and here are the kind of major design elements. For example, if there's likely a second floor, let's make sure we're mitigating the operational costs of that. Maybe it's conference rooms instead of, you know, having a need to have staff up there, right? So those big pieces are, are coming, and, uh, I know Nick will be working on that, all this. So, so as we hit first quarter next year, we'll be just gelling this and bringing it forward for more discussion.
And on, kind of piggybacking what Administrator Hemsey said on that. I mean, as, um, I've been working with the City of Chaska, and, and we've been talking about the, the planning for the library, they are on board, onboard is probably a strong word, but they, they understand our, um, some of our budget constraints. And I feel like we have a really good partner in that, um, in kind of working and solving some of those issues. And we have started talking about, we probably need to really look at libraries in general and have kind of a long-term comprehensive plan for our library system. And, um, yeah, so that's something that, that we'll be working on as well in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned electronic access. Uh, is that, we had any bumps in the road with that, or is that going pretty smooth? I don't know if that's you or Nick.
All smooth sailing with, well, it's just Victoria. It's important to have a good starter system. And what I hear around the state, Scott County elsewhere, it's going very well. And very, very few, if any, concerns about security, et cetera, so.
Wonderful.
Not that there's not challenges, but I think the, the green light is there to, to move ahead with additional, all of our libraries, from my perspective.
Nick, can you sign up for that online? Right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, you can sign up online. You do have to do an in-person, uh, orientation to, um, you know, use the equipment. Staff wanna make sure that you can, you know, get into the build and everything you work. So you can sign up online, but then you do have to do in-person orientation. It's a, a short orientation.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So the next item is health insurance. As you recall, in twenty twenty-four, we did a request for proposal. Uh, it was just a two-year agreement, uh, which means in twenty twenty-six, we'll be going back out for a, um, an RFP that will impact our twenty twenty-seven, uh, budget for the first year. So we'll see what the market, what the market bears with that. And then the new legislative impacts, uh, twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. We have, the total is six point one million increased costs. Um, the administrator is recommending for the next three years, including twenty twenty-six, so twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight, a two percent levy surcharge. Uh, that would raise, uh, additional four point eight million in levy. Uh, you can see even with that, we'd still be looking at a one point three million dollar gap. So the, we have, that is a legislative priority for twenty twenty-six, is to try and mitigate that, delay it, eliminate, um, any of those costs that are in there. So that's, that's an ongoing challenge, uh, that we see for the next three years.
Mr., um, Dave, could you, legislative impacts, could you explain that a little bit for the people at, uh, watching at home? What do you mean legislative impacts?
Actually, I have a, I have a, a nice slide that I'll be, uh, presenting tonight at our public hearing.
Okay.
That summarizes all that, but I can, uh, hit the highlights. There's the, uh, does not meet, uh, criteria, uh, which is a, a state cost shift that it, when it came on to counties, um, in June of this year. And that's a nine hundred thousand dollar increase in, in our budget. That's the main, uh, driving factor for twenty twenty-six. And then in twenty twenty-seven, there is the, they call it the ACT. It's a, um, child protection, um, uh, cost, increased child protection cost. It'll be actually ordered by a judge, and based on this new law. And we're projecting that, uh, three point four million, um, is the latest number I saw. And then there's, uh, several other factors that are adding up to that, uh, six point one million. So it's all, and some at the federal level as well, um, mainly, mainly the state shifting costs to, to Carver County in the next, over the next three budget cycles.
And we're housing one individual up at, uh, Anoka for, what was that?
The nine hundred thousand dollars, is that still the latest? Yeah, I know it, it increased one time, but it was like.
Nine hundred and ten, to be exact.
It's the annual cost for that one individual. That was, and that was a cost that the state had been paying, uh, up until this year.
And Mr. Chair, let's not forget, paid family medical leave. Uh, it's not part of this one point five, it's an additional item, a real number, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Dave mentioned this, the federal items, uh, been hearing a lot about SNAP, right? That's, that, uh, with the government shutdown ending, that's coming back. However, some of the actual burden of paying for the benefit is falling on the counties, which is unprecedented in my three-plus decades. A real, a real concerning sort of trend lines. And then Medicaid is the other big one. So taking it from all sides here, it seems like it's top of the headlines every day almost.
Attorney Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the name of that act is very easy to remember. The quiz, the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionality Act. What's interesting about that act is that there is a phase-in program in Hennepin and Ramsey Counties that came with five million dollars in funding. There is no funding for these requirements that are gonna be additional steps that Health and Human Services are going to have to take. It is ordered by a court. The court has some discretion, but still gonna have to follow the act. So we don't know how much it's gonna cost, but it's gonna cost a lot of resources for sure. Now, additional steps that HHS already has to take beyond what their day-to-day requirements are.
Yeah, I'd also, I'd add on top of that, you know, the costing is difficult. We've given, given it our best shot. I've heard big discrepancies between counties, uh, but we're not Hennepin County, right? So, so they have their own way of doing business and things that they cover that we don't now that might have already been built in, for example. But it is, it, it's a big number, no way around it. And, uh, we'll be, we'll be working on this, no, uh, in addition legislatively. Uh, I've asked Heather, why don't you come in and talk to our judges about, about just general education, right? And how, how this is gonna impact us, because some of these things will be ending up in the courtroom. So we'll be working on that. Uh, but it's by far the biggest piece of the puzzle. And, uh, what's really concerning is we don't, I don't see the, the horizon here. You know, you don't see that, where's this, is this gonna change it? Can we change course legislatively, which is the real, to me, fix? So, uh, that's why that, it's in the three-year, three-year discussion.
Yeah, that, that's a good suggestion, actually. We have a, a justice advisory team made up of partners in Carver County. We've had for decades. So we meet with our judges, probation, court services, the jail, myself. So we have quarterly meetings, and that'll be perfect time to discuss that because at our last meeting, we were talking about this. And, and a lot of us don't know the details of it because it's, it's requiring extra active efforts that um, we're trying to prevent unnecessary removal for African-American and others. And there already are these steps, but there are additional steps they have to take. So I like that. I'll put that on our agenda, um, to educate our courts and everybody else and invite Heather to come in.
And Mark, I could work in that. I was actually thinking of the county courts meeting, which is commissioners on that.
Yep.
Both, right?
Because we have all our judges at our justice advisory. I mean, we should. Today we have our, our lunch meeting. We could bring it up and maybe indicate that that's one of our goals in January.
We're talking first quarter of next year.
Sure.
Well, and the real problem, the real imminent danger uh, to all of this is that the legislature, God bless them, uh, believe they've come up with some really, really good ideas, expensive ideas, that they refuse to pay for within their own budget. They got a budget problem, and so they're transferring those costs to the counties. Uh, and so, for example, Carver County property taxpayers have not paid for food stamps. They have distributed them to the needy, but they don't fund the program. That's changing. But the scariest part is a local legislator said to our legislative committee, what difference does it make which pot of money it comes out of? The taxpayer's going to have to pay it anyway, which shows a pretty strong lack of knowledge of the property tax system, if you ask me. And so more about that to come. It does matter what pot of money it comes out of. And that is what I believe. Um, five county commissioners and our staff are united to fight against. And so um, we got, we got some work to do. There is a little bit of time for some of this, but uh, it's going to be, it's going to be a, a tough year in 26. And just one other question on the paid family leave. Is that the county's intention? That 0.88%? Are we splitting that with employees?
Yeah, that's in our contracts.
Because we were at um, uh, was participating in a mosquito executive board meeting and Anoka County said that their portion is 900,000 and they're doing the 50-50 split. And there was a commissioner from Hennepin County and they weren't even giving a number on what that was going to charge or cost their county. It's going to be in the multimillions. Thank you.
Commissioner Fahey, our number's 400,000, as, as Dave mentioned.
Well, and I'll add, um, I don't think county commissioners qualify. You will get to pay, but uh, we, we don't get to use it. We won't be using it. So.
I think that's an indicator of rushed legislation, Mr. Chair. And I, I, again, just like with this, these other issues, I don't see that changing. It's certainly not, not for 2026. So it's built into the payroll tax and uh, we're not only paying that, our employees are. We negotiated that in good faith, but definitely a very blatant, obvious cost shift. And what we don't have in here is the, the other ramifications of folks leaving, right? And not that we don't support good leave time, right? Which is, you know, back to that stock item. That's in part trying to, trying to buffer some of the other impacts that are on the way. And time will tell and we'll, we'll report back on that.
And then, Mr. Chair, to your point about county commissioners, you're talking about elected officials, correct? Correct.
Yep. Mark's looking quizzically, but yes, you're paying in.
My plan to take 20 weeks off away from you guys, not going to happen.
We would, we would miss you, Mr. Chair.
How about the four-day work week? Taking Tuesdays off?
You couldn't survive without us that long.
You're right.
All right, Mr. Chair. So that's, that's a high-level overview of the operating budget challenges that uh, we are, we are aware of and managing and uh, will focus on uh, over the next couple of years. Um, and here's the uh, chart that I mentioned in terms of the FTE request by department. Uh, you can see that the majority are in the next two years in uh, 2027 and 2028, uh, with the library being uh, kind of in the far right there. That's the Chaska Library. And you can see it's spread uh, throughout um, the, the various departments. This is the chart that shows that county FTEs per 1,000 residents and uh, using the Met Council projections for our estimated in uh, future population. And the, the uh, you can see the, the red is actually in the budget. Um, the blue is the actual, and then yellow is what the division directors requested. You can see that kind of goes up for a couple of years, then it goes down more and more dramatically. And then Mary Kay just do a straight line average. If we smoothed that out, uh, what you would, those requests, if we, if we could find the funding for them, which should be, is a whole nother challenge. But um, you could see that, that would continue that line down um, uh, on this chart of uh, the FTEs per thousand.
Dave, can you give us a little background on the per 1,000 number? Why isn't it per 1,500 residents or per 750 residents, for example?
Um, I'm not sure of the, the history of that. It's just kind of a standard number of per 1,000 residents. Um, I, I'm not sure where um, where we picked it up from, but that became, it's what a lot of, a lot of counties use. It's kind of a, a typical, a typical calculation. So uh, we just, we following that as well.
Mr. Chair, I can add to that. Uh, it, it's, uh, goes quite a few years back. It's a pretty common benchmark, as Dave mentioned, between the various counties. I think sometimes uh, various groups like Mike or others try and put it together. I would, I would say it's a benchmark. It's just one indicator, right? Uh, you gotta be careful how you read into any benchmark. This one in particular, for example, if we have, have uh, things happen like our, our crisis team, for example, outsourced, there's a big impact, right? That doesn't mean that the, the service goes away. You still pay for it. So uh, that, that's pretty important to read into here, and it's very difficult to compare county to county. We don't, like, keep bringing up Hennepin for some reason. We don't uh, run a hospital, right? Uh, some, some counties across the state run hospitals. We don't. So be cautious with this. Uh, but it is, it's a good benchmark. It's a good look at the organization and trying to keep up because we are about these services and that it, it, there is this direct correlation between services and our population.
Uh, so that kind of wraps up the operating side. Now switching to the um, the capital side. I mentioned the five-year facilities, vehicles, and equipment replacement schedule. Uh, the $2.1 million levy dollars are going into that for uh, 2026. Um, and that allows us to have a planned, orderly, flexible, organized. I really love this schedule. As you can see, I tried to add every positive word I could think of that helps us um, uh, keep everything organized in terms of all the things we can think of that we need to replace in the next five years. The one change uh, that we're recommending for the future for 2027 uh, through 2031. Uh, in the past, we've increased that $100,000 increase is what we've been planning into. Uh, that was part of our long-term financial plan, uh, to add 100,000 to that equipment replacement schedule. Um, we have our Shelby and, and Public Works. He manages all of the vehicle uh, and equipment replacement um, throughout, throughout the county, with the exception of the sheriff's office. Um, but all those are, are, he's watching those, he's tracking those. And there was a significant increase in prices alas, um, during COVID in the last couple of years, so 20 to 40%, he's mentioning. And so there's a request to increase the 100,000 to be 150,000 um, starting in 2027. And do that 50, 150,000 then for those next five years. That would raise 250,000 by uh, in 2031 budget. Um, there's also some additional one-time attachment he requests that he's working on, uh, that'll be out there. But we're, he's trying to get the um, uh, our, our vehicle age industry standards. Because of those costs, he's not been able to replace thing, a, as much each year, and we're starting to fall behind a little bit. So um, that's, you know, and, and that's our uh, non-binding assertion of future intent. Our intent is to request $150,000 increase rather than 100,000 in 2027. Obviously, county administrator and the board will decide if, if, if that's justified or not. But in terms of planning, we're looking at a, an increase in that uh, levy increase into this uh, facilities, vehicles, and equipment replacement schedule uh, by the 50,000. It can see this is Shelby's chart just showing the various types of equipment, uh, with the Carver County average um, uh, being in blue, and then a recommended replacement age in red, and then the proposed, where he's focused in the 2026. Um, so you can see, you know, various things we're, we're doing well on. Um, and um, he's just, we're trying to keep track of that and making sure that we're um, keeping things um, close to the a, average industry standard, you know, where it makes sense. Then moving to our, our capital improvement plans, our CIPs, uh, the Chaska Library, we mentioned that. That's uh, 2028, 2029 grand opening. There's a $4 million one-time cost for the county to furnish that new library. That number just um, always seems huge to me. Nick says it's legit, but you know, thinking of shelves and, and books, how can it be that much? But uh, that's the latest number. Um, it's, it's a, it's something we've been aware of, but something that it kept, it just kept moving. It kept getting pushed back, kept getting pushed back. So we, um, I guess we never really got serious about finding uh, the money for that. And now that, and now it continues to grow. Um, but it seems like it's becoming a real thing. So uh, we have to start looking at the options and come up with a recommendation. You know, the two main sources of, of funds would be the year-end savings. If we can save up for it, there's enough time to, to do that and prioritize it. Um, Lyndon, you may recall, I, I mentioned this to the county administrator yesterday, that um, this has happened in the past where it, we had this large sucking sound. It was just money being pulled in. That's what Lyndon used to do with the Public Works buildings. Now we're going to hear that for this Chaska Library. $4 million is a big number, so we're going to start pulling every dime, every nickel, everything we can towards this uh, library. We've already set aside, I believe it was 500,000 or 400,000, some, some uh, numbers. So they got some initial um, to do startup costs and pre-design and stuff. But now that it's becoming a, a, a real project, we're going to have to focus on uh, coming up with that, um, that amount of money. You know, like I said, we've done this before. You know, we, we have a priority. Um, this is happening, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll find it, um, year-end savings, or we potentially have to add it to our 2028 bond sale for the government center building. Uh, but we'll be, we'll be focused on that. We'll come up with a recommendation uh, for next, probably, likely next year, um, in terms of how we should fund that. Um, in terms of the, in, in that building miscellaneous CIP, uh, we also have some facility improvements. Uh, we're trying to, some are big ones. We're trying to line those up with that, uh, the master space plan study. Obviously, we want to replace something if we're going to be tearing it down. Uh, but there are things that, that we need to uh, keep maintaining and, and keep replacing to keep the heat on, or keep the heat coming and the lights on. Um, so we're managing that as well. And then we have two new um, software requests. One's in pay, uh, in patrol, a big number, um, you know, 3, $400,000, and then also a new employee relations payroll software package, ballpark $400,000. So we're working those into the plan. At this point, it looks like we got money for those things. Uh, we should be okay to, in moving things around. But just to uh, let the board know that that's a ongoing thing that we're managing in terms of our buildings and, and our other miscellaneous costs. Um, the big one is the master space plan study, uh, our financing assumptions. You guys are, are well aware of this. The 4, 5.3 million debt service for an $82 million project. We had 3.1 million levy available, so we had a 2.2 million dollar gap. The plan was to close that gap by lev, by increasing our levy 450,000 for five budget cycles. We did that in 2025. It's included in the administration's recommendation for 26. Um, so we're on our way towards, towards meeting that gap. And then um, uh, as I mentioned, Nick and, and Cindy and Isaac have a presentation uh, following the Roden Bridge uh, present, uh, PowerPoint.
Hey Dave, is there anything in our budget for um, similar costs as we anticipate Victoria's growth and a replacement of a library in 20 years? And then um, seeing the dramatic growth west of here, um, button up to the property lines of Dogren Township, um, nor the annex 2050 comp planning upon us. Is there anything in our budget to plan for the same for a library um, as City of Carver expands?
Um, that's really a Nick question, but I'll answer it for him. I, I don't think so.
Couple of things, though. The City of Carver, um, uh, according to their ordinances can, um, cannot have a library. Um, they're too close to Chaska. And um, I think I mentioned earlier, uh, this um, comprehensive 30-year library plan. So that is something, again, that, that we're going to start working on in 2026, so we can get a handle of library costs kind of going forward.
Can I continue my question? Um, the next one was, is um, standards within the library, because it's attached to the liaison ship at Chaska. It sits in my, it's within my district. Um, sets a standard that, uh, if it's within six miles, um, there is a need for a new library. But if you look at the address from the Chaska Library to um, Dogren Township, uh, the, the golf course that's there, it's 6.2 miles. And so it's within a 10- or 20-year look that that would be, um, would be on the docket. And then typically, when a city, um, and I'm sure Commissioner Anderson is aware of this, when a city exceeds 10,000 in population, that's about the time when they start considering um, ownership of their own services. Um, a lot of them will see that they need a community center or a library, uh, or a DMV even. And all three of those things, currently the City of Carver uses Chaska as those services. And there's a lot of arrangements and synergies and all those other things. But from a planning purpose, I know that we've done a great job in the last five years of looking at the replacement of the 600 building. That's why our friends from Lioe are here today. Um, we had 20 years deferred maintenance in the parks. We've, we've addressed that in the last five years. I think as we're having um, those conversations about library, Lisa and myself have been part of those conversations. I invited the conversation with the City of Chaska to do a quarterly check-in like Tom and I have done with Victoria for a while, and that has been a conversation there as well. Um, but as we're planning, these are big dollars. We have three million-dollar plus um, uh, parking lots. Just recently, we've started to talk about the potential replacement of the First Street Center, which is antiquated and old. Uh, we really haven't addressed the sale of the Encore Building, which could create some liabilities with new roofs and buildings, et cetera. And so a holistic view, I full, fully support what Lisa's talking about and talking about a 30-year lookout for the libraries. Um, but if we're talking about 40, $4 million in today dollars, we have to look at that across the other cities too, and, and what the cost is, not just for them to build it, but for us to operate it and to maintain it and all the things that go with it. So, thank you.
If I might interrupt again to Commissioner Anderson and her comments. So you're going to, a 30-year study? Oh, and is that space? But is there going to be room to discuss the, the future of what a modern library looks like, like, like Victoria? Uh, is this all going to be fleshed out?
Well, I mean, again, we're just having, we're just starting conversations um, about this. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think it's something that we need to have a conversation about on, on what library looked like, what, what modern library looks like. Um, uh, we, Hennepin County has uh, 41 libraries in their system. They've, they've done a lot of building and rebuilding and remodeling. Um, they have a comprehensive plan, so we're kind of taking a look at that, um, just to kind of see starting point. Um, but I, I think we need, I think everything needs to be on the table. And, and to your point, how extended access looks into it, uh, or, or how extended access impacts library usage um, as well. So uh, and again, great conversations with the City of Chaska, and they understand the budget constraints, and I think we have a good partner with them uh, in the plan. And um, so grateful for their partnership and support.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, then the Roden Bridge CIP, um, Lyndon's going to cover that in his PowerPoint. The Regional Rail Authority, uh, they, Lyndon's working on uh, developing an included pavement management plan and as well as a cost share policy uh, for trails on the railroad corridors. Parks and Trails CIP, um, the goals for the CIP is steward, they have three goals, stewardship, modernize, and expand. Uh, the good news is, as Commissioner Ruderman mentioned, that we have a solid plan for stewardship and modernization. The big question mark is expand, is those buildings. Um, you know, we have, we have a few of them. What are we going to do with them? We're, uh, what do we need, what, where's the, what's the future look like in terms of those uh, buildings? That'll be the focus of the That'll be the focus of the uh January, February uh twenty twenty-six um PowerPoint presentation. High-level update will focus on that building expansion. We'll give you an update on the stewardship and modernization pieces, um the good news on that. And then there are some additional requests, levy requests, but they're pretty pretty reasonable. We should be able to fit those into our in the in the over the next five years. So overall, you know, good story for stewardship and modernization, but we've still, expansion, there's a lot of questions, a lot of dollars, a lot of things we gotta figure out with that. But and mainly, as Lyndon mentioned, it'll be if we find the money, if we get the money from the state, you know, then we can then we can build those things. If we don't get the money from the state, you know, then it becomes a a bigger question as to what what does the future look like? In terms of trails, the big news is two point seven million annual trust funds, uh annual trail funds, the TAA, um they have money. They there there is money now for trails, um so they need it, they need to prioritize. So that'll be part of the presentation as well, how they're gonna prioritize, where does that money go first? And then how do they how do they move forward with that? So that'll be coming uh first part of uh twenty twenty-six. And just a reminder then uh about the budget calendar, you can see the uh work session today, the recommended long-term uh twenty twenty-seven long-term financial plan. And then uh tonight at six P M. we'll have our public hearing. And then we'll be back into the board in a week from today, uh requesting board action of the final twenty twenty-six levy and budget, and then the final twenty twenty-seven long-term financial plan. So we will provide resolutions and we'll be uh looking for the uh board adoption of those uh at at next week. Any any questions or further direction?
Are we expecting to come in at eight percent or has that changed any?
That's still a recommendation.
With that, Lyndon's turn, and then.
Lyndon, I like this time of the year when uh when uh the asphalt plants get ready to close and it makes projects get done. Been having fun talking about uh projects getting done, including, did we oversee the Galpin project in Shanhason? That's Chan's Chan's project. Two-year deal done tomorrow, apparently, I don't know if they got it done today, but uh anyway. Good time of the year.
Yeah, it is, and I appreciate you traveling around, sharing pictures of all our completed projects.
It's a big, beautiful county.
We've done a lot of work this year, as you know. Anyway. Looks like our system went dark, Mr. Chair, give us a minute. Just wanna take a break.
Oh, take a break.
Yeah.
We'll take a brief break and uh see you back here in a couple of minutes.
This doesn't happen when Collins running the show.
No.
Tanner.
Lost the link.
Yeah, you're banned uh. I mean, it didn't. We wouldn't even get out there.
Okay, we're ready to roll.
We're good to go, okay. Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners? Yeah, so just a quick thank you to everybody for twenty twenty-five, it's quite a quite a year for us.
You're welcome.
This is a uh, this is one of our highlight project photos of the forty-one and ten roundabout. So obviously a very large thirty-two million dollar investment on anger total, so pretty significant. The amount of work that the contractor and our team accomplished in one year on this project. Ups and downs, right? But thanks to the cities and the public for their patience, of course. And then we have Eighty Second Street, of course, that we we finished on time as well, so. A bunch of other projects, two overlays this year. The idea was to get ready for next year and the year after. So for twenty-six, um you can see significant program, ninety-one mil. Obviously, Highway Five is is the big project on the horizon. Is this point of work on the screen? Which one, this one? Obviously, that's a huge job right there that we just opened bids on. Ninety-eight million was our estimate, came in at eighty-six, so that's great news. It's a little deceiving, we're not gonna build all of this in twenty-six. The north-south roads basically get done in twenty-six. The main Highway Five project, um which includes a closure, happened in twenty twenty-seven.
Rolling acres in twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What do we inti- what do we attribute that big, huge savings to?
Really good timing on the.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, I mean, getting it done early before con- you know, before the winter is really important. Contractors are a little uncertain right now, and if you remember, the federal government passed the big, under Biden administration, I A J A funds. Huge increase in federal money, but it's taken a long time to get those pro- that money through the system. So the bigger contracts are actually not that busy, so um four ninety-four is an exception, the mega job in Bloomington. But there aren't many huge projects out there, so we, the timing was really good for us. And then with the the federal shutdown, um that just got opened up, there was a window there where Mindot delayed all their own projects. So they're they're like a month behind on their lettings. We just kept going, you know, you gotta roll the dice, hopefully the the uh the process works itself out, which it is. So it's just good timing, and I think, so this is a big contractor that got this job, C S McCrossan out of Maple Grove. They are building the four ninety-four job, so they they see a gap in time. There's another phase of four ninety-four coming in in a couple of years, so they see this as a good, let's move from the big job they're doing now over to here, and then hopefully we'll get the next one in. On four ninety-four, they'll take it all the way to the airport, so um.
Six-ten is done.
Six-ten is done and open, yeah.
I don't know who did that, but that's a biggie.
Yeah, Ames, I think, but I'm a hundred percent. Yeah, there's a big, you know, Scott County's doing some big jobs, you know, the border interchange is a big one Ames is doing. So there are projects out there.
Does the savings get retained by the county or some of that's shared with partners like Victoria?
Yes, they, everybody saves, the local, the local share, everybody saves. I think Victoria's total cost is two and a half, two point seven five total.
Will that go down with the bid?
That's with the bid.
But the bid went down so that.
It was closer to three or something.
Yeah, it was closer to three, it's like two point nine, so they're like two point five.
So will that two-five go down in light of the fact that we found what twelve?
No, just based on the way the numbers shake out, they've got utilities, the, you know, the the sa- we haven't dialed into where the savings were. Was it dirt, was it concrete? But it was just overall um great news, but.
Thank you.
Like I mentioned, then we got two twelve, of course, that we're building now. That one does have a few things coming up, a few issues that we we need to address with the soil correction there, so. Part of it is we need to figure out, you know, we we have some extra costs on two twelve, so the savings are good on Highway Five. And our partnership with the state will help us get uh two twelve done. But that project is, it's going okay, but there's some soil correction issues by the Bon Guard Swamp that need to be addressed.
Uh Lyndon, quick one, you have uh twenty-seven major rehab north of Watertown. When do you expect to go out and bid for that?
Spring of next year.
Okay, and then what about thirty between Mayor and Wakonia? I thought that was up for a major rehab this year.
Yeah, that's in uh twenty-seven, right there.
Okay.
We'll talk about that one in a second. Yep, yeah, it's been on the CIP for a while, but we haven't got to it, because um you know, with staffing shortages and stuff. We just hired a consultant on that one, it's coming to the next board meeting to get that one going.
Okay.
So uh what else is on here? Some highlights here, the five and eleven project in Victoria, that's the roundabout, that one is a little delayed, so that will fall into next year as well.
Lyndon, if I can, uh that's a, that's in my district, but I've been saying, we're we're pretty much done, correct? Except where the city now has to finish Steger. And then next year, the roundabout will also close Highway Five.
That's right.
And eleven. But we're kind of out of it for now.
Well, it's, that's a partnership project, but the city's leading it, so we we, the part on eleven that we just finished, or that's our, that's a separate project.
Right.
Happens to be the same contractor, but they're separate contract, separate contracts. So the city's doing the roundabout, actually two roundabouts, one at five and then the one at the new Steger Lake.
Right.
For the new uh city entrance there. That one, they got some soil issues, soil seems to be the common theme, that they, that one will be, we couldn't get this roundabout done. We were hoping to get it done this fall, so that will be done uh early spring in time for the five job.
Steger, okay.
Yep. So um highlight these pink dots on the map, it's kind of a cool project, that's an I T S traffic signal improvement, we got some federal funds to improve our traffic signal cabinets, our capabilities, we can do the timing in our office, so we can look at all of our traffic signals together, so that's a really nice job with some federal funds.
Lyndon, just a couple of questions around N Y A, the.
Yep.
The green is um Counter Road Thirty-four. And I've shared with Shelby just uh scheduling of that project with Stiftons Fest.
Yeah.
In late August, and then also there's a district baseball tournament happening in August also.
Yeah.
At that Young America Ballpark. What is the, the purple there project by others on 212?
That's a Mindot project on 212, where they're going to do a R cut, a J, J turn, as well as some roadwork on 212 itself. That's programmed, um, in their CIP. Now, that blue one, Commissioner Fahy, in town on, on 34 there, that's also, that's a city-led project to modernize downtown.
Correct.
They got some earmark, earmark money for that. So we're trying to get the whole corridor done at the same time. So that's kind of a partnership. We're paying for some of that too, of course.
And I think just the communication will be critical as that rolls into. I'll send you all my phone calls.
Sounds good. So the green, obviously a big overlay project on Highway 10, which is a very important road for us. We want to do that in 26 as well. That little blue piece on 90, that's a south leg of 92. City is developing here, a big residential development. So we're building a little piece of that road with the city next year. So Mount Hope Road on 61, this is another development. I'm sure you've seen a lot of grading, auto mask rating on, on 61 there. This is an intersection project we'll be doing with the City of Chaska next summer also.
I thought that was closing for three weeks here in December.
Oh, so it was closed.
It was closed. It's open now?
It's open now. That's a different, that's a different intersection. Yep. So yeah, just a quick update. We show this one every year. It just shows the county traditional revenue. This is revenue that comes to us from various sources every year. You can see the half-cent sales tax, uh, 9.4 mil. CASA money, that's the fuel tax, tab fees. The transportation advancement account that Dave mentioned, that's a new funding source from 2023 that's kicking in now. 2.7 million of that goes to, to roadways. 2.7 goes to active transportation, and Dave mentioned that for the trails. And then, um, about a million goes to transit. We've been working with Southwest Transit on, to implement that. We'll be coming to the board next, early next year on the transit plan, on how we, how we plan to use some of that transit funds. County levy, of course, so that's 2.2 million. Wheelage tax and program aid. So these are traditional sources that come to us every year. So the levy makes up about 9% of that, of that 26 million that goes into construction projects. Then on the other side, these are all the outside money that we get, the federal grants, state grants. Obviously, we, we're pretty aggressive at, at finding, uh, grants. And then, of course, our city partners help, help pay for our projects too, so. 27 to 31, another big CIP, another big five years. You can see the whole county's covered. Uh, I like to show the chart there that the county, those traditional county sources make up every time. It seems to be about the same, every five, six years, about 50%. And then every, all the other monies are grants, um, and, um, it's the city partnership, so. 27, Commissioner Lynch, this is where, this is where 30, if that all goes well, will be, will be built. So there'll be a rehab, shoulder widening project. Obviously, Highway 5 is still under construction. I put 212 on here because that was supposed to open or be complete, completely done in the fall of 26. But looks like it's going to go into the summer of 27 now. So that's still a project in 27. The City of Waconia is doing a reconstruction of Highway 5 downtown Waconia. They've got just about all the money. They had the Fed, the state bonding tour came out. They're asking for a little money there, but it's pretty much funded. Uh, let's see, so the, the dotted lines are resurfacing projects. Chaska, as you know, I mean, sorry, Carver, has a huge housing development happening in the next five years, three, three-plus thousand homes. So the first phase of that, which will have an impact on our system, especially County Road 11 and County Road 40. So the first phase there is for sure a roundabout at County Road 11 and 40. But likely, there'll be some reconstruction projects that are going to happen in the next five years along 11. So we, we're doing a study with the city to figure that out.
Lyndon, when it's included in the major rehab with the shoulder widening, is that complete tar then all the way? So is it going to be more?
You mean the shoulder? The shoulder?
Yep.
Yeah, if we.
For pedestrian and also bicycles?
Yeah. Generally, depending on the type of road, if it's a really, if we, if it's part of the, if it looks like it's part of our bike network, we'll do a wider shoulder, depending on the traffic numbers. Sometimes the shoulder will be four feet wide paved, sometimes it'll be bigger. And then the remainder will be gravel. Just, it really depends on the, but I can get back to you on that one, if you want to see that. So, uh, another big one, obviously on 40 in San Fran Township, that's, we, we're trying to redo the, the entire corridor of 40. So we have that one in, in there. That's an interesting project segue. We're trying to do total digital plans on that one, which is a new, a new thing in the industry that Carver County is ahead of most people.
And that's from East Union to the current rehab that was done.
52 to 50. We're just stopping short of 50.
52.
Commissioner Workman was at TAB. That's the one we got the scope change. Because that last little piece before 50, we're probably going to realign it to join up to 43. And we, we thought that would be 20 years out, but with this new development coming in, in Carver, the traffic numbers are probably going to dictate that happening sooner than later, so. That 40 job does have federal money, so we had to go to Met Council, three different committees, to approve ending it at the bridge instead of at 50. The other thing is there's bumblebees there, there's a bald eagle's nest, there's a potential burial mound, and there's an exotic tree, butternut tree.
That's the thing I couldn't remember.
All on that last little half-mile piece. So if we, if we had included that in the federal job, it probably would never happen. So it was good that we, that they approved us to cut it short.
Lyndon and TAB, uh, TAB staff did a really good job. I thought I was going to have to jump in with all four of those things. Because people, people scratch their head, well, why are you cutting the project back? What about we cut the money back?
Right.
But, uh, this would be a good time to interject that for all those motorcycle riders out there, if you're wondering why your rides aren't as fun as they used to be, Lyndon is, uh, straightening out all these roads, all the fun you could have on a motorcycle.
Safety is a tough one, I think.
Safe, too safe.
Yep.
You saved five lives, though.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the 40 part down there was a really bad one.
Dead man's curve.
Yep.
You got chastised on County Road 40.
But it was a beautiful road. It still is a beautiful road, but not as beautiful as it used to be. Big, beautiful road. 2028, so here, uh, you know, as you go out, like Dave mentioned in the long-term financial plan, things are more, you know, it's more uncertain, if that's the right word. I mean, we're still planning for these projects, but they can move around in years. So this, this is a year where we're, you know, highway, if the big mega jobs will be finished, thank goodness. But we have, we're going to move our business hopefully to the county system and away from Mindot for a while. So the, the big project that we're, we're starting work on designing is this 11 and, and Highway 10 project. So that'll be a two-year project. You can see the county funds of 50 million. That's a big one. That's a lot of sales tax funds. But that also includes part of 10. The cash flow is kind of split in two years. Obviously, resurfacing in the dotted lines, a bunch of bridges that we, we kind of get pay-as-you-go money from state bridge bonding. So those float in schedule depending on when, depending on when the state, uh, has bridge bonding available, these guys right here, a bunch of Calvert, big Calvert's to do. We do show, whoops, we do show a potential bridge replacement at 140. That's the one where the road is, it's the, the.
Low one?
Clearance is very low. So, uh, we either want to remove the bridge or replace it. It might be removed and bring the road up to the grade of the, of the railroad. But we've had that in our CIP for a while, but it's expensive. So until the bridge bond program is funded at legislature, we kind of wait. And then we apply for the funding. So we've done really well in bridges, but it takes time to get that fund, uh, filled every, every other year.
And Lyndon, to that point on, uh, 30, also 36, the bridge coming into that railroad bridge?
Yes, sir. That one's in, uh, 20, 2031.
With those discussions with Dogren Township and.
Yeah. You're talking about the, the one.
On 36.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a.
Wasn't that just going to get filled in?
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, it's a fire department route, so it was, we tried to, we tried to do that. But I don't think that's possible. So we've got to regroup with the township and the city on that one. Because that bridge replaced, that's an $8 million structure.
Isn't that a railroad bridge?
Yeah. So to build a new one there is 8 million bucks.
Really?
Yeah.
Don't forget TCW.
Yes.
And if I could, uh, Lyndon, you mentioned that sometimes traffic will take over. We've had discussions with the 92 extension, um, from Highway 5. There's been numerous accidents on Highway 5 and 92, so that might, uh, hopefully, we can get that one done pretty soon. But, and this is the 29 construction, that's the roundabout, um, on Highway 10?
Yep.
And then you mentioned, you showed Cologne 284. Is the state actually going to reconstruct that road in 31?
Yeah. Oh, we're going to 31 now? Okay. Yep.
And then is that going to become a county road?
Yes.
It is?
Oh, yeah. So what will happen is either, well, we haven't negotiated the agreement yet. What will happen is either they'll, they'll scope out the project, do a design and a cost estimate. They either give the county the money and we'll rebuild it, or they'll build it and then we'll take it over. So we, we, we've got to work through that process, but it's been a long time coming. You know, that road is not good. So we, we've been trying to get them, but we don't want to lead it. We want them to do the work and then, anyway.
And I noticed in all the, um, charts that there's no real big improvements then on 212 going back to the east. And the reason I asked the question is because since that detour on 61, has there ever been talk about putting an on-ramp off of Big Woods Boulevard?
Yes.
At that roundabout to get, to go on 212 West?
Yes.
There has been discussion?
In fact, that's a big priority for the city. So that's going to, that's probably going to, we just, I just talked to Matt Clark actually last week on that. That's, that'll probably enter the CIP. That's a high priority for Chaska to get that ramp, those, those ramps completed.
Yeah, because they're putting that Big Woods industrial park.
Yes, big A U A R coming.
Right at that intersection and they're, they shared that with us.
Yep, so we, great point, Commissioner. We're doing a big area-wide sub-transportation plan. That includes Chaska, Victoria, and Carver, just to see, because there's huge stuff coming. And they've all got these A U A R area-wise, it's a area, it's kind of a big, it's an environmental review, if you do a really large-scale development.
Yep.
So several of them have got these going on at once, and we're like, ooh, we got to get together and figure out what the transportation needs are going to be. So we're kicking that off with the cities, and that'll probably define future CIPs, what other projects are coming, um, so.
Right, but it, it's important for us to build that road infrastructure to support those.
Oh, yeah.
Industrial parks.
Yeah.
Just like supporting 212 for the NYA industrial park.
What is the new off-ramp?
Big Woods.
By Big Woods?
If I could zoom in, I would.
If you come up, it's the old Creek Road on, uh, Chaska.
Yeah.
You go up, um.
The old Creek Road that's closed?
No, that's, um, it's either the Snake or the Creek or whatever. But where Halasig's farm is? You know, the big Halasic original farm?
Okay.
That's Big Woods Boulevard now, and it runs into 140. There's a couple of roundabouts up there. You can't get onto 212 going west.
Yeah.
Those roundabouts, you can go east.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Crossing over 212.
Oh, CASA 44, the big interchange you built.
I had, I helped that.
Yep, exactly. The WWW project.
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, the 5 W's project.
But the ramps are only one directional. What?
Yes, very well, I was not happy.
Complete the whole interchange.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big priority for Chaska. Not sure how much county money they want.
Lyndon, before you move off that conversation, it's popped up a few times, and, um, people talk about corridors of commerce. Are we a part of that? And, and some of the mentions, the mentions that Commissioner Fahy and Workman are talking about, would that, would that benefit from corridors of commerce potential funding to help accelerate some of that economic development?
Yeah, probably. There is, you're talking about the Mindot program, corridors of commerce program?
Are we members of that? Are we officially?
It's like, it's, it's a, it's not really a, it's not really, it's a, it's a more of a program plan for Mindot. They call it, uh.
TED?
It's a grant program, corridors of commerce through the state. And, uh, we applied for Highway 5, actually, that next piece in Victoria. And the legis, it's very popular in the legislature because it's the only way to really get expansion projects built, state highways. So that, but it's a grant program. That's all I can say. So you have to apply for grant funding. And they're doing like project readiness funding right now to look at future projects so that counties or cities can get some funding for design. And, you know, that would be a potential one there, would be to get some, ask for some design money for that interchange completion. Sure. You, you, you guys are way ahead of me here.
Well, 284 is going to be interesting too, because I know that we've talked about, I mean, there's, there's two flavors. There's two flavors of 212, right? I call it the road of gold because we spent $300 million on it and it could lead to billion dollars of tax base. But if you open up 284, that'll, that'll make Cologne even more coveted once they get, uh, water and sewer capacity. Because you'll be able to access it from 212 and from 5.
284, you're talking about this green? That's not an expansion, Commissioner. That's just a rebuild.
Rebuild or not?
Yeah.
Rebuild or not?
It'll be nicer.
If it becomes a county road, it, it opens up things that are within our domain, right? And, and so it's smack dab into the middle of that, of that road. And so it's coming, whether we, whether we plan for it or not. Hey, another question I had back to the 12 million dollars of savings on Highway 5. And I don't, I say, I say savings loosely because I don't know which bucket it goes back to. Do some of it go back to the state? I anticipate some of it gets retained by us. And, um, um, a good amount of the, my constituent base bumps up against the road on 14. So I'm wondering if this is an opportunity for us to accelerate that intersection. It's going to be a, it's going to be a mess, but in front of Jonathan, I know Commissioner Anderson, myself, City of Chaska, you guys have had conversations. But given that savings, is there any way that we can pull ahead the design and build of potentially addressing that, 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 that spot from 41 all the way over to the roundabout on 41, or 14, I mean, Pioneer?
Oh, yeah, that's this green job here in, uh, 2031.
Is there any, I mean, it looks like.
Yeah, we've had that.
After the last three or four years, it looks like you guys might be a little bit bored with only 40, 30 million dollar projects a year. So is this a chance with, with additional money, with, with a known need, um, and with?
Well, we've had that one earlier in our plan, 28, but the city's not ready. They don't want to do it yet.
I think they might be a little bit more ready now.
Okay, well, yeah.
In the conversations, Commissioner Utterman, that I've had with them, they, they, um, I, I mean, we, we can talk about it further, but we just recently had a conversation with them about this, um, as well. So that's something that, uh, uh, you know, again, I'm not sure that they're, um, ready to move that up. But Lyndon, let's chat about that. I've been working with Darren Milky on that.
And the last question I had is, it looks like two and a half million dollars in contribution from levy to roads, um, in 2026. I don't know if it makes sense for us to pull back, um, some of those dollars. Um, if we, if we're contributing 2.5, it's only 9% of the overall. We're getting an abundance of money from state and federal. If it makes sense, I mean, a million and a half would be a 2% reduction of levy. I don't even know if it's a possibility, but I know that we've got time between now and when we see the budget the next time, so.
We talked about that at the, during the budget discretionary versus mandated study. And we did look at, I don't know if you guys remember, kind of dialing back our preservation program to eliminate one of our seal code cycles. And that would have trimmed that back a little, if you remember. We decided not to go there.
Okay.
Because you're kicking the can down the road. So you got to give somewhere on the preservation side. Most of that 2.2 million goes to preservation. We don't use it.
Okay.
So it's a tough one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch, the other roundabout you mentioned, I mean, potential roundabout on Highway 5 and 92, we, we put that in our program for 2031. Again, depending on the timing, that may or may not be, um, soon enough. We did do a crash, crash analysis on that one based on the, the crash last week. There's been 12 crashes there over the last five years, which, believe it or not, is not unusual. If you look at a similar type of intersection, so it's not critical, but you know, there's a pattern coming, right? So proactive approach would be to accelerate, you know, that intersection there. So we have popped it into the end of our CIP. You know, that intersection there, so we have popped it into the end of our CIP.
Wonderful, wonderful, I think that's uh another one that the city might want to accelerate.
Yes.
Taking a lefty.
They all want to accelerate everything, well, Chaska's a different, they. Commissioner, I think what they, the the Angler job was a lot for Chaska, right, that's a huge project, so. They've got a lockdown on the southwest part of the city, so. They want to just be really strategic on when the next county highway has to come in, cause they pay, you know, ten to twenty percent. And that's a big lift for them, so they want to be really strategic on when the next county road project's coming to Chaska.
Makes sense, thanks.
I was gonna say, a lefty off of ninety-two onto five east is a long wait, kind of, it sounds like there's a lot of crashes, but it's a long. It's like a super-sized middle Washington Parkway onto five, trying to take a left.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, growing, they're growing.
They're moving a lot faster.
And just to the east of there, that Donna Franz passed away. So she had that at the farm, that barn just to the east of that intersection on five, so that's gonna. Be sold to a developer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So a quick update, Commissioners, on the sales tax, remember the plan, this is our plan for twenty twenty years. Green are are county projects and and red are trunk highways. So I know Commissioner Udoman asked this a few meetings ago, that we need to update the plan for the next cycle, and we're doing that, we're starting that work on that. Quick cash flow just shows, just for sales tax funding in and out. We show this one every year, which which of the big projects are coming that use sales tax? So you can see we're here, Angler's here, twenty-five, twenty-six is Highway five. Highway five, then we got the big, I didn't really mention that big job on. We're doing this project on Highway. On Angler. You know, this is one we're starting to design on, that's a big project, coming in twenty. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so. You'll see that one on the chart there. There's a little dip, again, don't don't get too concerned about the the negative. Negative sales tax, it bounces back and. This is just a snapshot in time on our on our on our program, so overall, we're in really good shape. To um. In the program, this gives an update on the status of our sales tax implementation plan. So anything that's green means we're either we're either done, you can see the dark green, we got significant projects that are either complete. Or under construction, so huge uh. Huge win there, and then the the green, the light green are short-term, they're in the CIP. So they're coming, so the the remaining ones that are that are out there are the ones in um. In in orange. So there's nothing in the long term anymore, so we'll be done by, oh, before twenty thirty-five, I I would think. And that gives you a kind of a snapshot, and our total investment, just on projects that use sales tax. Is about six hundred and thirty million and the sales tax portion is a hundred and fifty-three. So you can see the return on the investment is enormous on those projects. And overall, this goes to Dave's, this is just a cash flow chart that I keep. Just goes to Dave's point on the on the road and bridge, this is the whole road and bridge fund. So um. Obviously, this is the ideal world, as if you spend money and collect it in the same year where you'd be at. And so focus on the light blue, that's the actual cash at the end of the year. So the problem is, is with the with the claiming process we have on that, when the projects get so big. Keeping up with the revenue side is really difficult, but what I'm trying to show here is we'll be okay, it's just a matter of collecting the funds, so you can see there's a big. A big in and out in twenty-five, hundred and thirty-two million of expenses, we've got to collect a hundred and fifty-six in revenue. So we're really ramping up our systems to try to get those bills sent to our partners every month, so we can get bring the money in, so we're not in this lag situation we've been in in twenty-five, so. But this just kind of shows you the growth, I mean, the the cash flow over the years as we go through our programs, so.
And Lyndon, is that a staff issue in your department or is that in Dave's?
It's not a staff issue, it's more of a process issue, we we're implementing some software that makes it easier, but you got the feds, you got the state, you got the cities, it's, you know, you got, you send them bills. People have turnover, we have turnover, they have turnover. New people come in, they want to know how how this process works, so it's slowed down in all areas, but it's getting better. And we're convincing our cities that, as Dave mentioned, we used to bill them at the end of the project. And now we're trying to tell them we need the money, you know, at least. Once a month and once every two months. So we're trying to get in that cycle and they just got to come to terms with that, right, they want to pay, they've got to pay their bills every month as well, so. But with the huge program we have and then in, well, this year and the next couple, we we've just got to be more on top of that, so. We got really good people in the office. Sending out the the bills, but it's it's a process.
We just cash the checks.
Okay, so that's it.
It's all their paperwork. We cash it and that's.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Great job, Lyndon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lyndon, great, great work.
All right, see no more discussion.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, today I have with me Cindy and Isaac from Leo A. Daily, and they're gonna be doing the majority of the presentation today, uh, if not all of it. But I just wanted to make a couple of points before we get started. Uh, first is, I know myself, I always like to jump into the design phase right away. And we have tiptoed into that, but I just want to remind everyone, we're still in the pre-design phase. So things like, uh, what's our overall program, you know, how many seats do we need for county staff? The size of the building, will that fit on our campus here? Uh, understanding the setbacks and the parking requirements and all of that, and of course, the budget. So that's more the pre-design phase, it's not, you know, where's Nick in a sit, does he have to share an office with Dave, you know? How big's my pencil drawer, like that all comes later, uh, again, we're on that pre-design phase. Uh, also, I just wanted to uh mention, we do have the master space plan. I intentionally called this the Government Center Pre-Design because this is one project that falls in that master space plan. Uh, we do have other priorities, other projects in that plan, but phase one is this project. But we're not forgetting that we have First Street Center and other priorities that are also out there as well. So with that, uh, those are my two points I wanted to make, and I will turn it over to Leo A. Daily.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having us here today, um, my name is Cindy McCleary, as you know, uh, I'm an architect with Leo A. Daily, I run our Leo A. Daily office. And our government civic and education practice nationally. I have with me.
Good morning, my name is Isaac Carley, I'm a project manager with Leo A. Daily, uh, been working in public sector buildings for my entire career, for twelve, thirteen years, um. And and yeah, it's been fun to be a part of the team.
Excellent, and Isaac's um strength that he brings to the table in addition to project management is uh engagement, and so at this stage in the pre-design, uh, his skills are particularly valuable in terms of. Um, kind of gently, right, poking at conversations about how big, how big really, how big really? Um, and really getting uh some good valuable feedback uh to influence the overall project. So as Nick mentioned, this is uh one step in a larger sequence of events, and so just wanted to take a moment uh to remind. Um, uh, the Commissioners, but but also the sort of general public of the history uh that led us to this event. So over the course of a number of years uh back, uh, ten plus years back, there'd been a series of space plan studies. One of which uh occurred pretty significantly yearly between uh two thousand eight and twenty fifteen, that was really looking at the parking lot crunch here at the campus. Those studies were evaluating total campus needs and also total parking count needs. Um, that planning study effort continued then every year or every two years or so uh for the subsequent uh series of years. To update the evaluation of the parking need and the building space needs for all campus office space. So there was a study in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen that the Leo A. Daily team did, um, that identified three potential uh phases for a project. Um, evaluating all of the facilities, uh, we won't go into them in great detail, but uh in a um capsule. The evaluation identified that the uh former public safety facility had met its useful life. Uh, that the building adjacent to it, uh, lovingly referred to as the banana building, um, is a um low ROI facility. It has a single loaded corridor down the center that's extremely wide, which makes for very narrow usable office space on either side. It's one-story, no basement, no ability to expand, um, and sitting with a lot of green space around it, so a very low return on your space. And then this building that we're in here, uh, six oh two, um, has good solid bones, uh, so good infrastructure, uh, good exterior walls. Um, uh, windows, things of that sort, um, but is um the the beneficiary of a a good. Uh, opportunity to uh do a little bit of a refresh and think of the campus overall. So that space study identified three potential phases, um, phase number one was move HHS off-site. Um, part of that was because of the significant growth that HHS was seeing as a department and the burden of the additional parking that came with that growth. Um, phase one A then was a backfill of six oh two, and phase two is to build a new Government Center West at some location. Um, not at this location, was initially a a part of the original conversation. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we did a space plan update, uh, remind you, twenty nineteen was just before uh COVID. Um, in that update, we looked at alternatives to moving HHS off-site and alternatives to uh a second Government Center campus. Uh, we looked at buying and renovating a number of sites, we looked at the real estate, we evaluate the potential of renovating those for for different purposes. Um, they tended to pencil out, um, uh, generally speaking, as as um. Uh, a possible solution or a possible path forward, um, but it meant a bifurcated campus uh condition. Twenty twenty was COVID, twenty twenty-one, we all came back again, uh, literally came back again, uh, with a new understanding of what work life looks like, uh, and hybrid work life looks like. So it gave us an opportunity to go back to the space needs study again, look at what hybrid work might do to impact uh our space and our space standards. It also uh began a a pretty uh robust conversation that has continued through this pre-design, and that is, what does the future of work look like? What does hybrid work look like, what does flexible work look like? Um, and what ultimately does the physical space of office and or workstation look like? Um, and it's a reduction of some square footages, it's the trading of amenity space for office space, it's the sharing uh of underutilized spaces, things of that sort. So twenty twenty-four, then, uh, we picked up that master plan again, looked at it again, the difference between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four um was significant philosophically. Twenty twenty-one, we were coming out of COVID, uh, we all worked from home, we all believed we worked from home reasonably well, um, but we were noticing that the public wanted people to come back. Um, and so um, uh, as public started coming back for the paying of some bills or um, uh, uh, inter- uh, interaction with their HHS staff. Uh, staff more in person than digitally, um, we were also seeing that that was making uh a change in our office space needs. So the twenty twenty-one numbers considered a fair amount of work-from-home hybrid work, the twenty twenty-four numbers then start to kind of regulate a little bit. Uh, that that uh counterswing uh balanced back with a significant emphasis still on work-from-home. Um, but now finding kind of what what we anticipate to be the new norm in hybrid work moving forward. So the recommendations from that master plan was, uh, still, a Government Center West as being the first uh recommendation. That could be an off-site Government Center West, or it could be the demolition of two buildings uh and the expansion on site here. That became the Commissioners' direction to investigate the demolition of those two buildings on site and expansion here. Phase two then, First Street, um, and then phase three, Public Works. So from that twenty twenty-four master plan, the recommendation was to move forward with a further pre-design analysis of the phase one and the phase one only. So that's what we're gonna present today. Remember all the history?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so the County Board motion, twenty twenty-four, approve the master plan, phase one of the project. So again, phase one is looking only at this campus in particular, including the schedule, next steps, the uh development of planning committees, a projected budget of eighty-two million. And appoint a county commissioner, in this case, County Commissioner Fahy, we appreciate your service, to serve on the executive committee. So this is the culmination of uh that work, do you want to walk through this quickly?
So we uh met a lot with staff, met a lot with um. Division directors, um, and that led us to uh. Trying to find a more optimized. Program for the project, so um, the new building was refined from a hundred and fifty thousand square feet in the twenty twenty-four study to ninety-five thousand, five fifty. Uh, which is a thirty-six percent reduction in space, and again, that, a lot of that is really trying to narrow in to what does hybrid uh look like and mean. So we met with all the division leaders, we tried to refine this program, again, thinking about what is the strategy in terms of how do you work? Um, now and how do you want to work in the future, so this work, this uh removes away from a one-to-one seating, focusing instead on flexible workspaces. That are are really aligned with how people work, so we talked a lot about what is the purpose of coming into the office, what are the tasks that you're doing at home? And um trying to find spaces that. Uh, we're building out in the office that can that can uh help. Collaboration and and. Allowing people to be together when they're together, um, so this project proposes uh renovating. Uh, the entire six oh two building, renovating a portion of six oh four in the basement. Um, and then a new construction of a of a new building, uh, where six oh one and six hundred are currently. And this is just a very schematic uh block diagram to just show sort of sizes on the site, and you can also see that uh parking would be rearranged, rearranged as part of this process as well.
And and one piece on this, just to share, uh, uh, cause it's in light text, and so I wanted to point your eye to it. Um, the difference between a space planning study and a pre-design study, space planning study, we're working with theoreticals, right? We're we're um, we're at a high sort of hundred thousand feet, we're talking about square footage, space, uh, general sort of operations. When we get to this pre-design level, we are putting that physical building on a site, and so now we're starting to evaluate campus, setbacks, jurisdictional reviews. Any other authorities that might have jurisdiction and may influence the project cost, development size, et cetera. One of those um was the courthouse lake and the setbacks of courthouse lake. So this was a new piece that was identified and learned through this process, that there is a setback to the courthouse lake that will influence the location of this building. Primarily because your current building um penetrates that boundary. Um, currently, and so with the removal of that building, we've got a conversation to open up about how do we manage and mitigate that edge? And so we've placed this new construction footprint that we're suggesting here to be within uh the county portion, uh, respecting the boundary in all instances possible. Um, and have one location where we are matching existing conditions. So there'll be some conversation as we move forward, as there is in any project. Uh, with the jurisdictions, in this case, D and R watershed, City of Chaska, and of course, the county. Um, on the mitigation of the protection of that boundary, on the courthouse lake boundary. Um, it's an amenity that the staff uh talked about often in the engagement effort, wanting to make sure that we maintain that amenity, that we beautify that amenity. That we continue to remain uh connected to that amenity and and allow the um community some connection to that amenity as well, and so. Um, uh, we've created a concept here preliminarily that respects that. Um, we're also showing a dash line of the area of the boundary of extents of where we're addressing parking. Um, as the project moves forward, we we may choose to address additional parking or additional, uh, Lyndon is not here anymore, but uh asphalt overlay or other things. Um, but at the moment, uh, we're addressing the parking that is going to be specifically pertinent to the area of. Um, of uh impact. We also perform an outside cost estimate, um, this has been a particularly challenging year, in fact, a particularly challenging four years for construction cost estimates. Um, and so the effort that we used here is very similar to the effort we used in twenty twenty-four, which is to go to an out-of-house cost estimator specifically that does nothing but uh estimate construction costs. They look at a variety of different conditions, uh, they look at a real-time bid analysis and what's coming in, uh, they look at their own database, um, and their own database of uh of past bids awarded and otherwise, uh, and they're pulling data from that. They're also um talking with trades often to understand what impacts are on the horizon that the past data isn't showing us. Um, uh, one thing to keep in mind, um, uh, with construction cost estimates is they're always programmed to the dollar in which it, or the day in which it occurs. And so, uh, Lyndon made some um, uh, comments earlier about getting some good bids this summer, that's fantastic, that's a past data metric, we take that into consideration. As we're planning for pre-designs and things of that, we are looking for a future data number, and so that's where there's a. And so that's where there's a little bit of science and a little bit of magic that comes in to play by taking past data and then talking to the market, understanding what the conditions are influencing in order to project some future dollar impact. So in this instance, we are looking at a total planned square footage of 125,000. So that's new construction plus renovation plus a little bit of six oh four. The estimated construction cost for that is $65.3. Construction cost. We're going to talk a little bit more about the additional costs that come with a project. There's a fair amount of them, including, you know, furniture, design fees, permitting, technology, cabling, TV monitors, things of those kinds of things that we'll address. But I wanted to share a little bit about the Rockwise estimate and how we arrive at that when we're doing future predictive planning based on back data and then current data, which is subjective but important. So as the numbers break down, we pulled it into five different categories just for the purposes of being able to compare and contrast to other projects, use that back data, future data, kind of predicting. The demolition of 600 and 601, demolition tends to be a little bit more economical, if you if you will. But they have the ability to to break out this project in a couple of different contracting bids. And that's why we wanted to separate the demolition from the new construction as a consideration to give us some time or space to be able to either contract each of those two efforts, number one and number two separately, or the potential to bring them together. And when we bring them together, we will see some cost savings. We always, we always do when we bring them together. Our initial cost is assuming that we'll bring them together. New construction of the office building is about 52 million. Heavy renovation of this building is about 6 million, 6.6. Light remodel, some space in the lower level of six oh four is about 1.9. And then the site development costs are 2.2. So just to unpack that a little bit, just so we know when I'm talking about light renovation, mid-renovation, significant, what does that mean? The demolition of 600 and 601, we do have independent mechanical electrical systems for those two buildings. There's some crossover with this building, however, from technology, cabling, data cabling, things of that sort. And so in order to demolish, to demolish those two, there's some short-term remedial work that needs to happen to reroute some infrastructure in this building to accommodate that and allow this to stay up and running while that occurs.
Cindy, does the renovation include this room?
The renovation includes this room? It may or may not be for this purpose.
We might move the boardroom?
You might move the boardroom. Yeah, one of the goals initially in the space plan was, if possible, to look at an opportunity to put the boardroom in a position where you can secure the rest of the building from general public access. For instance, is when the boardroom is used in evenings, for sake of example, when the rest of the building is shut down. Right now, that's not something that you have without monitoring activity in the hallway and things of that sort. So that could be done by way of putting the commission room on the first floor. It could be done by way of just organizing stairs, elevators, card access doors to be able to monitor that movement. But but that's one of the goals of the master plan is to look at providing some after-hours improved security here that doesn't rely on visual monitoring, that can rely on infrastructure and technology. The new construction of a civic building, a couple of the assumptions in this one that we wanted to make clear, we're assuming because it's on a campus that it's going to be consistent with the campus materials and aesthetic of this campus. So there's a large reliance on Chaska brick and the yellow tone brick. There's actually two tones of brick on this campus. There's some use of precast, some use of stone, some use of metal. We're anticipating very similar architectural aesthetic and materials for the new construction building. We're also assuming conventional MEP systems. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But conventional MEP systems are conventional for an office building. One of the things we're seeing in the marketplace is that counties and cities are leveraging state legislative dollars, grant bond funding for their projects. Those grant bond funding allocations do come with a higher expectation for building energy performance, which has a very large impact on MEP systems at times. For for sake of like specificity, would require solar panels, could potentially require wind generation onsite, would require 100% water retain and treatment onsite, and likely would require some type of geothermal well system. All very, very fantastic, high-performing building systems, but they do come with an additional cost. And so we've assumed that this would be conventional to the systems that you guys are already working, working with on campus, which means your facilities directors will be able to sort of monitor, manage them, understand them, et cetera. But we're reflecting the aesthetic in a new contemporary way.
Are you recommending or place to recommend one of those options or the other, the bond and bond and grant or the non?
This this budget evaluation that we have right here is anticipating county-funded in entirety, not state-funded. If it is state-funded, there is a higher threshold for energy savings and performance.
Slower and more expensive.
Which triggers solar panels and wind generation. Yes.
We can still do solar panel, but we don't have to do it under there.
Correct.
Thanks.
Correct. Yeah, it is a stipulated requirement with those funds that you meet a particular energy performance. You can choose to meet that energy performance on your own, but with those funds, it's a stipulated requirement that must happen.
We are not, I mean, we're not getting into the details. We haven't gotten into details of that specifically, but we do have costs that reflect not having solar panels on there at the moment.
Yeah. I'm sensitive to what we did at Paradise Commons, and we put geothermal underneath. It's not lost on me that the, it's a new skill set that you have to do.
It's it's a new maintenance skill set. Absolutely, it is. And what we're finding, some of the geothermal systems too, they're becoming particularly sophisticated. So is the digital monitoring of those?
Yeah.
And there are increased conversations about the cybersecurity access of that digital monitoring. And so there is a maintenance requirement, maintenance knowledge required for those more sophisticated systems. And then the heavy remodel of six oh two. This is heavy, but not heaviest, if you will. So we're anticipating, based upon our analysis, that the exterior envelope of this building is in really solid shape. Your brick's in great shape, your mortar's in great shape, your windows are in great shape. Yes, we're going to be doing some work inside, and that inside work's going to be pretty significant. It will probably take down all walls, ceilings, floors, lighting, HVAC, those types of things, reconfiguration of those floors. We will be addressing the elevator. We will be addressing the stairs. Anytime we do a renovation of the scale, we're going to have to bring everything up to code, and the stairs are one of those. We will be addressing the bathrooms and the quantity of toilet fixtures, because that will be one of the things that would be triggered by code. So you can think of it from the inside in, if you will, is where the most significant work is. That's why we call it a heavy remodel. We're not going to be doing significant work to the exterior environment short of some entryway improvements for branding and public access and things of that sort. And then the light remodel in six oh four, we're talking specifically the basement. There's some underutilized spaces in that lower level basement. The print copy room is down there. IT is down there, and there's some storage down there. And so we've got the ability to better utilize those spaces. And so that's what this light remodel indicates. That could be a part of the primary project. It could be done via a small and independent contractor at a later point in time. So some of these things can occur in phases. Some of these things will be best served if they occur at once. Obviously, demolition, new building, best served if they occur at once. And then the site development costs, this seems large. It always seems large. We are anticipating, because we've got courthouse lake on one side and we've got the creek on the other side, we are anticipating generally, we've got a higher water table here. So we're going to be dealing with some type of site conditions. We don't know exactly what they are. We never ultimately do, even when we do borings. And so we use estimated evaluations to understand what the site impact would be. And so we're seeing a slightly larger site development cost because we're anticipating we'll have some additional site needs at this campus location.
Cindy, are you aware of the city dump used to be back here?
I have certainly heard those rumors over and over and over again. We have not had any engineering analysis to affirm the extents of that.
Not a rumor. I was there often with my dad. But they did have some methane issues in this end of the building or some of the building. They had a little leakage. I don't know, I don't know the extent of the cleanup back there.
I don't think we, we were, we were concerned that there might be some methane there where we put the existing expansion of the current parking lot back there. And kept an eye on that. They'd like the fact that we capped it, actually.
Yeah, they would.
I think the issue with the going further to the east, there's a flood area there and meeting the requirements of that. I think that the concept of putting a cap over a dump is actually a good one.
Yep, yep, that's, yeah. It's a recommended strategy to encapsulate, in fact, as opposed to remove. We remove only if we have to remove, but encapsulating generally becomes the strategy. So I think one of the things to keep in mind, and you are talking the far end of the site? Are you talking this end of the site? The far end of the site, okay. One of the things to keep in mind then is, and we'll get to it when we get to soft costs, but is to consider conducting an engineering analysis that can evaluate the depth of that condition so that we can more accurately budget for it. So there are ways that we can do that. Soil borings and geotech reports are our best way of doing it. They literally drill down a hole. They let you know what they pull out, right? And we could make some evaluations in terms of how deep that debris goes. We can also run water tests, perk tests, radon tests, things of that sort, and also understand what's happening below grade.
Do your estimates change based on that knowledge? Or has already generally worked into your?
We're doing, we're doing very, we're doing no demolition to that side of the site. And so there is an indication of some parking over on that side of the site. And so that we would be encapsulating any further activity that occurs there. But we're not doing any soil removal currently within the scope. So no, we're not anticipating costs for that.
The city wanted us to use that as a proof of parking, and they they sort of indicated that that could be something that would not need to be built so long as parking was meeting what the county needed for the space right now. But just showing that that could happen in the future.
Thanks.
Why'd you bring it up then?
Okay, so we had mentioned the construction costs, and there's a whole bunch of other things that make a building happen. So the 65.3 million is the construction cost as we have it identified. The next chunk of money is what we call soft costs. Soft costs tend to be anywhere from 20 to 30% on top of the construction costs. There's a lot of variation in that 20 to 30%. We've run these numbers a few times. We can continue running these numbers, but we believe we've got some good accuracy here. And so our allocated distribution of those costs are as follows. About 1 million in owner's costs. So owner's costs could be a variety of different things, but generally speaking, it's like the environmental assessment. It could be if you conduct any public engagement efforts, sometimes PR efforts, those kinds of things would be considered owner's costs in support of a project. Generally, we want to make sure that there's funds there for those kinds of activities. There are design fees, that's structural, mechanical, electrical, landscape, civil engineering, architecture, sometimes commissioning, a variety of other fees that go into that. If we need to have a transportation analysis for confirmation of parking costs or transportation loads for new curb cuts, things of that, that all falls on that fee. We've allocated about 5.2 million for furniture. That's anticipating a couple of different things. It's anticipating all-new furniture for the new portion of the building. It's also anticipating that we've got some really great furniture to work with already within the six oh two building or other areas of campus. And so it would be an evaluation of which of that furniture is at the level that it could be considered to be have remaining useful life. It's clean, it's aesthetically pleasing, it functions, all those kinds of good things. There's some reuse to it. But it's anticipating predominantly new furniture in the in the new building or however that gets filtered between the new building and six oh two. We've also identified 3.9 million in technology. There are two or three places in which technology costs fall in the project. There are some technology costs that fall in the building construction. Those are technologies that are literally fall within the walls, if you will. These technology costs are things that fall on top of the walls or on top of the desks, monitors, TVs, cameras, things of that sort. Generally, stuff in the walls include our data, our IT, our cabling, our card access controls, you know, those types of things. As we get a little bit closer here, we'll want to work with the county IT team to evaluate what they think they're going to need for their data center, ensuring that they've got enough evaluation of their costs as it relates to switches, backbone data banks, things of that sort. But we're anticipating 3.9 million for that loose technology, if you will. And then 1 million in owner operational costs. And these operational costs are effectively move management costs. We anticipate there might be a scenario where during a period of time, the folks that are currently residing in that building may shift into this building, and people in this building may shift to full-time work from home or, you know, a one to four kind of scenario where they hot seat here one day a week and they're at home four days a week. Or we might be looking at scenarios where there's a temporary leasehold space or you put them in some other location. Either way, there's costs to make some of those moves happen. And so that's what this $1 million allocation for is to make sure that there's money in the budget to enable those kinds of moves to occur. Does that make sense? So it gets us to a total projected cost of 81.7 million in 2028. A couple of things that we're seeing, we are seeing high escalation dollars outside of the general cost of, or the general escalation we're seeing in the marketplace. So even though the Fed says, hey, you know, we're seeing interest rates and the cost of inflation at, you know, 2.9% to 3.2, we really want to see it under three. We're seeing in construction costs anywhere from 6% to 16%. It's pretty significant. A lot of that is labor. We heard your presentation as well about the rising healthcare costs and other kinds of conditions that are affecting labor. They're affecting contractors as well. So we're seeing big swings in that instance. And then, of course, there's tariffs and data centers and other things that are putting pressure on certain elements of building construction. And so when we say that's 2028, that's a little bit predictive of where we think we're going to be. If 2028 becomes 2029, we're going to see that number go out, go up as the time goes out. So I want to just make sure that we're making sure that we're quoting accurate dollars and dates. Those things do matter.
Do you know how many square footage, how much square footage or what percentage of the project would be furnished with new versus keep the old? I'm just trying to connect my dots to what was shared in the previous presentation, about $4 million to furnish the library.
Yep.
And anticipate that this square footage is five, six, maybe 10 times more than that square footage. So I'm just trying to pull those two pieces together.
Yep, yep. So we've got about 95,000 square feet of new. The difference, because we do a lot of libraries, the difference between library furniture and office furniture is radical. One of the things pushing on library furniture is their metal shelving, especially because there are American-made steel requirements and a variety of different things, all good ultimately. But costs of steel shelving within libraries are significantly large. Most of those libraries have wood end panels on each of those shelves, right? It's custom millwork. It generally might come with a really nice wood species or finish. Those tend to be higher-priced goods. Obviously, there's transaction tops and things of that sort that are quite similar. We're talking office furnishings. And so when we look at these two things, there is a difference in the type of furnishing of a library versus the type of furnishing of an office.
Yeah, okay.
And also, I want to add in the library world is a sorting machine, which is, we only have one of those in one of our libraries. So so that's another huge cost that would would go into libraries.
Yeah, those automated retrieval sorting systems for libraries could be anywhere from 100,000 to 500,000 per single unit. Like, they're monstrous.
Do we have one of those machines in Waconia? I know we have one in Chan. Do we have one in Waconia?
Just Chan, yes.
Okay.
Just Chan, yes, right.
The library cost includes books, the open collection. It includes technologies or computers.
Can you step up to the mic, Nick?
I was just saying, that also includes opening day collection. So the books that we're going to have in the library includes technology. So the computers, things like that, so it's beyond furniture in that cost.
Or is the collections, I don't want to go too down the tangent, but is the collection going to move from the existing library to new library? Or is it starting from scratch, dollar zero?
We'll try to move over as much as we can. We'll probably lead the collection. That'll be a good opportunity to kind of go through it. But anything that's good, we'll move over.
Got it, thanks. Are we using you guys for a library? Are they, Chaska, engaged with you on that?
They're not, but I certainly would love to talk to them about it. How about that?
Not my domain.
Well, thank you for that. That's, that's one thing that we're, we're talking about with Chaska is, is having a shared architect. That would save a ton of taxpayer dollars. So there'd be an RFP coming up for that.
Absolutely. Well, we'll, we'll talk about that. We'd be pleased to talk to you about that. A couple of those other library things too that we do see, even when you bring over existing collections, is new dust covers on the books, old dust covers on new shelves tend to not make the public feel very happy. They walk in and go, well, I thought we had a brand-new library, and these look like shabby materials. So it's usually the new plastic dust cover. It's the new CD case on an old CD. You know, those are things that just make a new library feel fresh. So I'm sure you're anticipating those.
CDs.
CDs.
DVD's, VHS's.
CDs, DVDs, yeah. They're, yeah, I know, they're going the direction of microfiche. But, okay, so we've talked about a lot of this, and this is just a lot of, a lot more words. So I'll, I'll stick to the kind of important points. So the new government center, we're looking at about 95,000 square feet. I've talked to you generally speaking about conventional systems. So steel frame, concrete foundation, Chaska brick, combination metal panel, ultimately trying to match the aesthetic of the campus and give it a continued campus feel. The renovation of these two buildings, again, gut remodel, refresh on the inside, lighting finishes, limited layout changes. That's in some buildings, like 604, we're not going to change the primary corridor. We're going to try and take advantage of where some of those walls are, things of that sort. Up here, you're going to see some more extensive layout changes. Building systems, we're looking at conventional, high-efficiency MEP systems. At the moment, we're not anticipating solar or geofunnel. That's as much as you can give an apples-to-apples to other projects. Site development, we talked about, includes some allowances for soil and stormwater unknowns on the end of the site that we are working on. Schedule, we're looking at recommending a single bid package for demolition and new construction. We looked at it both ways. Ultimately, when we do a separate bid package for a demolition and a separate bid package for construction, it does two things. One, the demolition package tends to get a little bit smaller. You tend to get smaller contractors. You tend to get a wider bench of contractors. That's fantastic, but they come in, they put up a fence, they mobilize, they put up their job site trailer, they do the demolition. Then they got to fill the hole, then they got to take all that stuff down, and they got to leave. And then we issue a bid for the new construction. And they do the same thing. They put up a fence, they put up a job site sign, they start digging that hole back out again. So when we put those two things together, it does become a larger project. So we're looking at a single bid package for those two pieces. We can talk about what happens with 602 and 604. Might be opportunities for smaller bid construction and smaller contractor availability. Contingencies, within the number, at this stage, we do have contingencies. So we've got a 10% design contingency and a 5% construction contingencies. Those are extremely common. They are industry standard. You're going to get them from every single architect. What they are is, there are just a lot of things that we don't have identified now. We haven't even gotten to the design phase yet. And so we know that there are going to be choices that we're going to make at some point in time. We might be thinking maple, and, you know, Commissioner Fahy's like, nope, it's got to be cherry, right? Those are the kinds of conversations we haven't had a chance to have yet. We know that we're going to have them, and therefore there's going to be some contingency in there to enable us to have those kinds of conversations. But that's included in there. And then, of course, it's going to be a durable, high-quality, 50-year civic building with longevity, efficiency, and consistent with your county standards, which includes some continuity for your facilities team to be able to manage the campus as a whole. Okay. Schedule, this is a, this is a little belligerent. We could provide a printout if so, if so be. Thank you very much. Ultimately, the next phases of the schedule are the important part. After we get this work session kind of conversation going with you all, we're going to bring the final recommendation for this pre-design back to all staff and committees in January. We're suggesting a potential construction manager on this project. Construction manager at risk is a procurement method that is quite common, tends to get a more sophisticated contractor. And with the moving parts between demo and new construction and the connection with 602, we think that's the, the right procurement path for you. Optimally, that construction manager is selected at or around the same time you begin the design process, so that construction manager is providing feedback and cost estimation through the design efforts. We'd be looking at demolition of 601 in 2027. We'd be looking at the new building construction in January 2028. Currently, this project's schedule does give us a little bit of breathing room between now and 2028 to enable decisions, design conversations, public engagement, those kinds of things that need to happen. It's also trying to be tailored to Dave Freshman's evaluation of debt service and so that we're releasing bids at a period of time when debt becomes more available. It can move tighter. It can move up if there's a desire to do that. But again, it would be contingent on the debt service and debt availability. So, long story short, that is the schedule. Is there more you want to share there? I think we're getting in the weeds, if we do. Nice, pretty picture of the same thing.
I have a question on the schedule, Mr. Chair. So have you, now think about logistics and it just, it's going to be difficult, right? Moving folks out, all the construction. Have we looked at doing everything at once, including this building? And is there, are there other, beyond logistics? Are there other significant advantages?
There would be significant advantages to do it at once in, in dollars and cents in terms of you've got one contractor mobilizing one site. They put a fence around the entire thing. It's all in their command and control. So if they needed to move trades around in order to be more effective and efficient, they can do that when they've got the entire campus available to the, or this side of the campus available for them to do that. So you would get some efficiency as it relates to that, because every time you do a separate bid, it's a separate contractor mobilizing, setting up their field office, running their power, data, phone, et cetera, right? Doing their work, and then demobilizing all that stuff. You're paying for the mobilizing, demobilizing on both sides every time you have a separate bid. The downside, and what we'll have to run the numbers on if you guys choose to do this, would be right now, it's phased in a way to allow the phased release of debt service dollars. So demo, new construction will come at one chunk at a time. You can come back and do 602 at a separate chunk of time. You can come back and do 604 at a third chunk of time. If we push it all together, we will see savings in terms of one contractor. Because of the debt service piece, we may see it push out by a handful of months. And so we'll see a little bit of escalation add. But we can run that analysis if you want to.
To me, Mr. Chair, it seems like we should run the, run those numbers, you know, as I think, well, we have to find this other space, number one. Nick's been out looking around and surprisingly tight in terms of what's available. We know of all creation, some other things, maybes, right? And there's timing elements. But it's also to me about the service to the public and disruption. It almost feels like it'd be nicer just to do the, pull all the teeth at once here and, you know, get it over with and have a clear, clear communications program with, yeah, we've all moved, right, except for the justice side. But we can run that and see if, see if there's maybe some savings there.
Okay.
And Commissioner Workman, Chair Workman, kind of piggybacking along with that, Administrator Hemsey, where, do we have costs related to where people will work? And if we do split this out, are, are people able to work in the other parts of the buildings that aren't being worked on?
Well, that's, that's the issue, Mr. Chair, Mr. Anderson. Where do these folks go? We don't really have additional spaces we can just plug them into.
Right.
I think we're going to have to lease some space. And if we did it all at once, it'd be bigger space, right?
Right.
But there, I'm presuming there's, there's lease costs and built-in into the contingency, et cetera.
That's what this bottom-line item is, is what's going to be operational, is lease. And you're going to have costs even if you don't lease, right? You're going to have cabling, technology. You might have some IT infrastructure they need to go there first to set up. So there's going to be costs there.
Could we move?
Thank you for that clarification.
Could we move over to the justice side and move the justice people out? We don't want to view all those attorneys. We could put them in a double押韵.
I thought you were talking about sleeping in the, uh, yeah.
We have a meeting with the judges that you want to.
You know, the judges have really big offices. I think we can double up in that, and...
See, I'm, I'm trying to follow this to track. You had it on the screen.
The, on the schedule?
Yeah. I'm not following. So in January, next, this coming January, we have E, that E, little E, blue box. What's the, what are we doing there?
Design.
Engagement.
Engagement with the board, with public, with?
With the public.
Public and staff. And that's, that's the culmination of this pre-design, is the engagement with the public and the staff. The, the staff, for what it's worth, the staff has been engaged through the process at varying levels, predominantly at the level of the planning committee. And so, which is the division directors and their key staff individuals. They've done their own engagement within the departments themselves that are feeding that planning committee. We have had, for HHS in particular, a broader engagement effort because there are so many kind of moving parts in terms of those divisions. We've reviewed space and walked through space with every single department. So we've walked through every office space, every finance space, every IT space. We've engaged the staff in that way. This engagement is the sort of culminating to let them know where we all, where we've landed, if you will, in terms of the pre-design.
And then there's, there's engagement noted in the design scope below. That, that is, you know, part of something we've heard from the county that they want to do, but then also Chaska has a, has a requirement to do community engagement in order to prove, prove the project in the neighborhood. And that comes with some height considerations, some massing considerations. And so we just wanted to build that in the project and just let you know that we know that that's coming, and we need to plan for it.
Commissioner Workman, or Chair Workman, also in the engagement process, I think it would be, it would behoove us to include the engagement of some of our other community leaders across the county. I know the City of Chanhassen did some engagement work with their old building and, and showed that around and to help people understand the need for a new building. And I think that went a long ways in helping people understand kind of why they were, were doing this. So if, if that's something that we can do as well, I think that would be helpful.
Very good.
Yeah, Isaac was just pointing out, I mean, there, there is a good stage to have that engagement in early 2026 as we start to help the community understand what the action plan is and what the schedule might be and what it might look like. Open houses are a great way to do that. Newsletters through utility billing and other kinds of things are great ways to do that. And that's just starting to kind of get the juices flowing, if you will. The public engagement effort that, that Isaac was mentioning specifically for the city, that was because we were surrounded by some residential districts. And so the, the height of those, of this particular project will be of interest to those members. So that's a different type of engagement, but nonetheless, one that we want to plan for.
All right, are you wrapped up?
I mean, last slide, we're the last slide. Yeah, we always end on the really exciting part. We didn't land on numbers, though. We landed on schedule. How about that?
What was the exciting part again?
We all want to get to the exciting part, right? That's like, when does the pencil start hitting the paper and start to know what this looks like?
Well, and I know that, I'll speak for myself and maybe the rest of the board. I sure wish we didn't have to do this. I don't, I don't really want to spend all that money doing this. Thank you, you're doing a great job. I don't like to buy stuff I already have, even though it's bad stuff. I had a garage door fail. What do you mean? I already got a garage door. I don't want to buy a new garage door. I already have one. But things fall apart and get old and, but, you know, I'm often associated with loving road construction projects. I didn't want a four-lane freeway to go through beautiful farmland and ponds and cornfields, but you need to. And so I'm getting more used to the idea. I think the board is going to scrutinize everything and work hard to keep this affordable. And I think we have a plan for the financing and, but insurance companies, banks, and government, they, doesn't matter the economy, they're always building something. And so with the taxpayer in mind, I think we will, we will stay on top of this, so.
And Commissioner, if you, if you don't mind, just because we did breeze through, you all know the history, but for anyone listening, they may not know the history. We breezed through the first 15 years of the evaluation of space needs that led us here. But, but, but you all know, the public safety facility in particular is grossly underutilized. It's got holding cells that, that are functioning as storage rooms. It's got square footage that we can't find a real purposeful use for because of where it's located, the size, the configuration, things of that sort. And so you are, the county is paying heating, cooling, maintenance costs on a building that's not producing a lot of ROI for you. And so while it, while it feels like, you know, the garage door-to-garage door scenario, I, I respect and appreciate that. I think this would not be a one-for-one in that particular instance. That's a, that's an asset that's just not producing a lot of return for you all. So wanted to share that. It came out in our space needs study earlier. I know you recall that, of course, but the general public may not. And so for that purpose, it's the better utilization of that space. And you are paying for maintenance and ongoing costs for a building you're not able to well utilize.
Well, Nick is really good at giving a really rotten tour of that building. What's that smell? We don't know. So, but that's pretty pathetic over there. Nick does a good job of the patheticness over there and so. Nonetheless, I, I, I wish we could, I know a lot of outer ring and smaller-town counties will grab the now out of, out-of-business Kmart building or something, and they re-modify a lot of that. I wish we could grab something, but, yeah, we'll see. When do we have to make a final decision?
Well, I'd like to hear a direction, if you have any different.
We saw the timeframe. We'll be proceeding ahead here with these various steps.
I mean, we can, we can make a final decision right before the backcoast start ripping the place down.
Well, in, in fairness, you've got multiple points where you could make a decision and have an off-ramp if you so choose. You know, as we're completing the pre-design here, I think the feedback that would be helpful for us today would be things like, if we are grossly misaligned with your values, please let us know that, right? If we're grossly misaligned with understanding any of the space needs, please, please let us know that. Otherwise, the feedback that we're looking for is an acceptance of the recommendation, which would be a square footage and a dollar value and a footprint on campus that we think you would need in order to achieve the space needs for the next 20 years. That recommendation would secure the completion of the pre-design after we then review that with public engagement and others. You've got an off-ramp at that point if you so choose. As you enter into the budgeting process and the planning process, et cetera, it's not uncommon for our, our cities to begin the design effort and recognize that you've got a second off-ramp, obviously anytime in the design effort, but you've got a second off-ramp before we release contracts for bid. And so we'd be coming back to you at that point in time and say, new cost estimate, new evaluation, new square footage. Are you ready to proceed? So there are two or three, like designated mandatory off-ramps in the process. I think at this point, it would be the support of the recommendations made here, which is a 95,000-square-foot building and an $82 million construction cost on this campus.
Mr. Chair. Are we paying sales tax on this, materials?
That's a really, that's a really good question.
There's a proposed law, I think, I got.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of nuances in here. One of them, prevailing wage, which we talked about. The other one is sales tax and exempt. We do have portions of the city that are required, of the seven-county metro area that are required to use prevailing wage. Prevailing wage sets a minimum requirement of payment of construction labor and staff. What we find is that even though there's a sections of the metropolitan area where that is required with the growth and development of this area and the scale of these projects, those prevailing wage contractors really work within the 10-county metro area. And though prevailing wage may not be inherently required, they may still be using those laborers, and they may still be employed in those locations that require that. So we are anticipating prevailing wage in these estimates. So I want that piece of it to, to be known. It is standard and customary for any contractor that would be working on a project at this scale. And we're talking folks like a Mortensen and a J.E. Don and a Knutson, Kraus-Anderson, RJM, ICS, reputable contractors. For sales tax, there is an opportunity for sales tax abatement on materials. Labor's not taxed, so on, on materials in particular, there are some stipulated requirements that we have to go through. You have to provide your EIN number as a county, and the contractor, when they purchase those materials, have to know that. So there's a lot of accounting on the backend. You can do it. 99% of our clients have the tendency not to do it. It's very paperwork-intensive, but it, but it's certainly a possibility for certain materials.
Commissioner Fahy?
Yeah. Cindy and Isaac want to thank you for all the work that you've done. And just being part of this committee has been, I've learned a lot, and... And I think you hit it right on the head, Cindy, when you started with your presentation about how big and really, really how big. One of the exercises that we went through is we got to move these little building blocks around the campus on the map and we broke out into separate little groups. And I think that really helped us to see, you know, how big is ninety thousand square feet? And if you turn it sideways or east to west or north to south and how that fits on the footprint. So that really helped us go down through the process. And I personally do not think that you are at all misaligned with our values and what our space needs are today.
Commissioner Udoman?
I think you said it well, like we've taken a bite at the apple a few times and every time you start and stop, it costs money and we don't have a whole lot to show for it. Now we do. I think it's a tough decision to make to do it, but I think we've given you direction on budget planning, location and timeline. I think that one thing that's kind of led for direction is do we pursue the, let's get it done quick and save the escalating six to seven percent increases? Had we done this ten years ago, it would have saved us twenty-five million bucks, right? Those are the things. And if you push it out more, what does that cost and save? And you have to be prudent in the staging, all that. From everything I've heard, I favor doing it all at once and having a shorter interruption period of time. I also favor that if we can't absorb that in the short term for the staff and it lingers a little bit longer, maybe it makes sense for us to get creative and do something at Oak Ridge where we would be a part-owner of that building and we could retrofit that thing for the short term. And then when we turn it back, it's an asset to the community where they can either reprice it or take it out. And I think that in five years, that that would, that investment would be worth more. And so I think we can get creative with that. But I support continuing. I support the budget. I support doing it sooner than later. I support doing more in a shorter period of time than less over an extended period of time, so.
Commissioner Anderson, you have any comments?
No, I do want to thank you for all your work. I appreciate that. I will affirm what Commissioner Udoman says. I've been involved in many, more building projects, more government-building projects than I care to think about. And, yeah, the longer you wait, just the more expensive it is. So looking at that cost benefit of whether we do it all at once or spread it out, I think my major concern at this moment in time is where are our people going to work while we're building this building? And I know we have good people working on that, so I appreciate it. But once again, thanks for all your work. It's exciting to do this. So that's all I got.
Commissioner Lynch?
I liked your idea about Nick giving the real lousy tour.
It's a good lousy.
It's a really good lousy tour. And ultimately, we have to answer to the voters, why did we do this? You took down a perfectly good building, yada, yada, yada. I would actually like to get, and this is not, you guys have done a wonderful job. This is more for Nick, to actually have the pictures of why we're doing this. And from the innards of that building, and you could narrate it, you could have, but I would like to have that on the website. It's like, why are we doing this, you know? What are the costs to, and can you even reconstruct it? But anyway, ultimately, yes, I think we need to go forward with this. And the reason is because I took the lousy tour with, you know, just like you did. And with the explanations, I think that'd be just, that would help out a lot.
All right.
Okay, well, with that, we thank you for your time. Appreciate your service and your feedback and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Fahy, for your hard work on this, this project. All right, we are going to adjourn right now. See you at six.
I hate to see the old building go down, Tom. I know I told the story when my dad had his chambers and...